Joe, are you good back there? All right. A call to order, the Seinville Town Council meeting for Monday, April 11th, 2022. If you'll stand me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance certified of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At first is an approval of the memorandum of the March 21st, 2022, regular council meeting. Copy's been posted. Are there any questions or discussions from councilors?
Make a motion to approve.
First by Councilor Garrett, second by Councilor Choi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a request to speak on agenda items, and I will give anybody one last shot here. Amy, is this it?
That's all I have so far.
All right. So we have three minutes to speak when you come up. I'll set a timer here, and when it gets to two, I'll just give you the one minute left, and then at three minutes, we've got to, we've got to cut it off. I do feel like it's important to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak to fill that card, so I am going to go through every one of them. I would just ask that if, you know, if you get up there and the person in front of you literally said the exact same thing, if you just kind of, yeah, same thing here and step away, that'd be great, but otherwise, we will rotate them back and forth. So first, I'll just go down the list, is that right, Amy? Up first is Ed Metro. If you would, just state your name, your address. I think you might know the drill, right, Ed?
Ed Metro, 490 West Poplar Street, here in the Village. Aye. I'd like to read this to you, I sent this, but we'll keep it on track with time. Counselor, my appreciation and thanks to all involved for the hard work and diligence that has been put into this effort, this being the Historic Preservation Commission. I've read all the materials that have been developed, shared. As the owner of a house built in 1867 in the Village, this effort will certainly affect my property. Investing in an old house is a labor of love for its history and architecture, and some would say insanity for taking along the effort in the first place. What attracts people to the Village, among several other things, is the uniqueness of the historic urban housing stock, its architecture, and diversity in housing types. Over the last 20 years, since buying my home, I have witnessed the continued erosion of all of these characteristics. Tear downs and overbuilding have begun to change the very character of what we all moved here to enjoy. When you invest in these properties, you would like to be reassured that the investment is going to be supported by similar and complementary work around you. This currently is not the case in the Village. True, there are many good examples of sensitive rehabilitation work and indeed new construction in the Village. However, there are many examples that are not sensitive or compatible with the surrounding homes. Having a conservation district in place would provide guidelines and standards to assist in making sure that the character of the Village and its history is sustained and maintained. No one likes to be told what to do. However, when everyone plays by the same rules, there is confidence that your particular work will be complemented by others' work. One need only look at the many districts in Indianapolis to see the success that manifests in desirable and viable neighborhoods. Good evening. It is my great hope that a conservation district will be put in place at some point in the future. The standards and guidelines are not as rigorous as a full preservation district, but provides the right measures to ensure that the village we all love and enjoy will be maintained and supported by development and improvements that will enhance, not deter from, the unique place we call home. Please adopt this ordinance so we can move forward with the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Ed. Actually, I'll just go through one, you know, we'll just go through one side and the other here, since they're in order. Up next is Chelsea Overbeck.
All right, guys, I'm a really bad speaker. Okay, Chelsea Overbeck, 765 Flor Lane. I also own a few other homes in Seinville and in Village. I am supportive of the creation of a historic commission for Seinville. There are a lot of emotions, opinions, misinformation, and misunderstandings about what is happening on both sides right now. A commission is our best path forward to help give a platform for those in support and those in opposition with reservations, the opportunity to figure this out. Creating a commission does not create a district for the Village or anywhere else in Seinville. No district map, boundaries, regulations, or guidelines have been proposed for the Village or anywhere else in Seinville at this time. Giving the commission an opportunity to educate residents on how design guidelines work, work with residents, listen to them, and begin working on the specifics of their districts, which must be approved by the Town Council, is a reasonable path forward, in my opinion. Creating a commission allows us the opportunity to decide if we want the district, and if so, what kind of district we want. That could start with interim protection, meaning only regulations are on demolition. We can fill out what life is like with demolition delay first. The commission then gives us an option to work towards the district that we want. We can create a conservation district for the Village with only restrictions on demolition and new construction, or if you want a historic district, then you can work towards that for any place in Seinville, not just the Village. Districts are not a copy and paste of this ordinance, and if you believe that to be true, then you have not researched the hundreds of established districts in Indiana that follow the enabling state statute to create a commission. I trust this process, not because maybe it won't fail, it definitely potentially could, but I would rather try something than to continue to see historic homes be torn down. I believe our historic homes are valuable for a town, and I support a commission that protects them. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Up next is Mark Walters.
Good evening, Mark Walters, 545 West Poplar Street. I submitted a letter to the council, which I hope you've read. If you haven't, I encourage you to do so. I'm not going to read that letter here, I'm just going to make a statement. I support the creation of a historic district commission, and despite the concerns being expressed, I am confident, based on the almost three years I've been involved in this effort, and after talking and visiting with a number of other districts, that the commission, once formed, will develop a conservation ordinance that is fair and reasonable, and will not be an undue burden on our community. I urge you to vote in favor of the ordinance creating the commission, and I truly believe that future generations of Seinville residents will thank you for doing so. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Up next is Ashley May. Ashley May, going once. All right. Alex Overbeck.
Hey, everybody. I'm Alex Overbeck. I live at 765 Flor Lane. I also own several other properties throughout Seinville. I've been following along and doing my own research for somewhere around two years. I've read the proposed ordinance, and I understand how it works. I understand that there are no restrictions being proposed at this time. I understand that we are here to establish a commission that will provide us with an opportunity to continue this conversation. I understand that those conversations will allow us to utilize tools that zoning cannot, most notably being demolition review. I'm here to support this ordinance because with it, we have the ability to negotiate and compromise. We have the ability to create a thing that suits our needs. Without it, we don't get any of those things. We continue to fight our neighbors, we continue to lose things that we cannot get back. I'm here asking to move forward so that greater Seinville can decide what makes Seinville great. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jim Wallen. Okay. Rinky Bowman, getting that right? Oh, okay. Michelle. I'm going to butcher this, I apologize. Schlegel, Schlegelmilch, did I say that right? All right. Okay. He's not here? Not here? No, I guess not. Mark Delonas.
A lot of marks in the room tonight. Well, thank you. Mark Delonas, 40 South Third Street. I just wanted to put myself in favor of the forming of this commission. My wife and I moved here 25 years ago from a very historic town, Bristol, Rhode Island. If you have not been there, I strongly urge you to take a look at it, but like a lot of our neighbors and friends, we were very distressed to come here to Seinville and find out there really was no protection for the beautiful neighborhood that we settled ourselves into. Bristol formed one of the more strict historic preservation commissions or districts 35 years ago, but that area is now viewed as one of the most scenic and most important historic areas in all of America. Constantly gets reviews for that. So we came here, joined a committee 20 somewhat years ago with Ralph Stacy and a number of other people to help do essentially what we're doing, trying to do here today. That did not work. Another effort with John Towesley, a number of years ago, did not work either, so we're just trying to get this conservation commission formed so that things can move ahead. But I just wanted to state what this ordinance will do, the one we're talking about tonight. It creates a commission, that's all. It does not form the local groups for the Village or anything else, it's really just to take a look at that. The people who would be on this commission, if some of you hopefully already know, will be appointed by the mayor with further review by the Town Council. What that ordinance does not do, it does not create any protected districts in Seinville. Hopefully, they will come later. What does the commission do? They'll work on creating protected districts or protected single sites within Seinville. It wouldn't necessarily be the Village as we look at it right now. And what does creating a district mean? It just means drawing up a country map, a boundary map, classifying historic homes within those boundaries. Some of that has been done already, and to write design guidelines or standards for the district. And after that, what happens? The commission can propose a district, the Town Council has to make it official. Every district the commission wants to make has to be a new ordinance and has to be voted on and approved by the Town Council. Chelsea's already talked about what the difference is between this and what was suggested last fall. Why take this approach? It makes the process more open to the public, it allows for other areas in Seinville to have a protected district as well, and I support this because Seinville is a very special place. We wouldn't all be here tonight, so I do urge you to consider strongly creating that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I want to apologize, I was, these are not necessarily in order timestamped as they came through, so since we've gone through five, I'm going to switch up and go to five the other way, and we'll alternate from there. So up first is JD Hall, or up next, I'm sorry, JD Hall. Again, three minutes, if you would, state your name, your address.
JD Hall, 150 North Main. I'd like to start by thanking the council for your time and your service to this community. While the current ordinance, ordinance may not be the framework for later rules to be passed, intentions are clear. This is about the Village. The original draft ordinance was only for the Village. This ordinance would not be for the, not, would not be before the council if there were no targets, and the number one target is clearly the Village. Similar restrictions for the Village have previously failed due to strong opposition by those residents. What has changed since then? A survey was circulated by the organization called Preserve Seinville, Seinville, which was stated, the stated goal was of any, a conservation district designated, designation for the Village. The survey asked questions such as, do you support maintaining the Village in downtown as a focal point of historic heritage, strengthening the Village, architectural integrity and character, protecting the existing residential character of the Village, and number four, compliance with existing zoning requirements? Of course, who wouldn't support these points? The term Historic Preservation District, where its consideration, where its considerable restrictions were never mentioned in the survey, yet is now being used to suggest that residents are in favor of the Historic Preservation District. The survey also asked, do you support discouraging, discouraging demolition of existing homes? While, while options vary, a number of residents are against certain older homes being torn down. In fact, many Village residents believe that this is the extent the proposed ordinance. There's no wonder that many residents don't appreciate the full restrictions of the proposed ordinance, giving, given the misleading language in the survey, and significant, and several significant revisions to the draft ordinance, which is now 16 pages of legalese. As more residents become familiar with the details, they have quickly voiced their opposition. A new petition was started four days ago. Currently, we are at 101 folks that have signed that against this ordinance now. This is in contrast to 148 positive responses to the survey, which was conducted over several weeks. Sorry. Potentially 11 residents who originally voiced support of the survey are now signed against the ordinance critically.
Thank you, JD.
May I hand out?
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, may I hand this out?
You can hand that to Amy if you'd like.
These are folks.
Thank you. Up next will be Michael Marlowe.
Hello, Hello Town Council. My first visit officially. Thanks for having me. I am a resident in 140 North Forest Street, and officially, I oppose the Historic Preservation Ordinance. I moved with my family here five years ago from out of state, and really, we picked the Village for its walkability, walkability, inclusiveness, and small-town feel. We've significantly remodeled our 1970s home, which is not historic, but this includes an addition fence and changing the paint color. So we've gone through the process as it currently stands, and I can tell you from firsthand experience, it was very thorough. Prior to adding our petition and pursuant to the current zoning ordinances, we went through this thorough process, petitioning for a variance. I knocked on all my neighbors' doors, showing them the plans and asking them for their approval. After receiving the approval from my neighbors, we submitted our plans and went in front of the zoning board with our architect and contractor for their review. We were then questioned for over an hour by the zoning board, in which all plans were examined, math was checked, and statements both for and against our project were openly questioned by the board. It was a thorough and detail-oriented process that ended in our variance request being approved. Under the proposed Historic Preservation Ordinance, I believe I have the current version here, this will look very different. In addition for petitioning for a variance with the zoning commission in Section 12 for the expansion that we did, we'd also have to file for a certificate of appropriateness with the Historic Preservation Commission per Section 7. Next, a commission of people who are not elected but appointed by the mayor per Section 3A, would then determine whether our plans were appropriate using subjective criteria on visual compatibility in Section 9. Not knowing what visual compatibility is, we are trying to match, or any independent standard of reference, what is then given to us by the commission to follow.
Just one minute left.
Oh, okay. So in short, it's a very different process that we would have encountered, and I, I believe that our community, in short, we have a very warm, very friendly, very neighborly community. The interaction I had with my neighbors on this stuff was very friendly, and my concern is that the new board restrictions and legal standings that are given by this is going to change those conversations. Last comment, the survey is not a vote. I know there's been a lot of concerns or confusion on what the survey is. If we're going to change property rights, I would want us to vote on that as a community so that all the facts are known on both sides, and we can see it clearly. So if the commission gets to a point where we're putting something out to change our property rights, I very much would like us to vote on that as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next, Eric Lamb. I would ask, I know we've had some sporadic applause as we start to go back and forth, if we could keep that till you walk outside or something, that'd be great.
Don't worry, they won't applaud for me.
All right. Go ahead, Eric.
Hi, Eric Lamb, 335 West Ash Street. A lot's been said about this only creates a commission. My question is, why do we need a commission? No one has articulated that. When I stand up and say, I live in the Village, I don't believe my property rights should be taken, no one can say, well, everyone stops me and says, well, we're not talking about the Village, we're not talking about actual rules that affect you, we just want to have a commission. We're talking about the balancing of individual property homeowner rights, which is one of the single most important rights we have as Americans, but we want to create this framework that would allow limitations on homeowner rights up to, including any visual exterior change to historic or not historic homes under Section 7A. I'm not, there may be a reason why we need these things, but before we get to that, we need to understand what those reasons are. Let's not say, well, we'll create the commission and later explain why we need it. We need to have very strong reasons for establishing this commission before we establish that commission. So my questions are, why is the ordinance needed? What problems does it solve? Where's the list of neighborhoods that need these restrictions? I mean, the Village is a vibrant community, it's one of the most valuable neighborhoods in the state. You know, if we need restrictions, let's hear what they are before we adopt something to fix a problem that we're not aware of what it is. When you're balancing the interests of aesthetics the public may have in my home, there needs to be a grave need to say, okay, the public's interest in your home is so great that you can't do what you paid a lot of money to do at your home. And if you move into a neighborhood with an HOA, you know what you can and can't do. If you buy a home without an HOA, you have to have a vote amongst all those neighbors to implement that HOA. I'm not given that right as a homeowner. I don't like the idea of old homes being torn down, I go on record as saying that, but this goes so much further beyond that, and I have zero say. If this gets passed, there's nothing, and I, this doesn't provide those rules, I totally get that, Joe, but that's step two in the process. We wouldn't have this commission if there wasn't a reason for establishing it. Step two will be the Village, and that's where I live. You know, proponents like to say, well, don't read it on the face, even though, you know, you can interpret it different ways. There's these, you know, very aggressive attorney fees provisions that only go against the homeowner, not, or to the prevailing plaintiff, not to the prevailing homeowner. Well, the town is in a lawsuit right now, and I'm not picking sides in that battle, but these things happen. No one expected that to happen, so why wouldn't it happen here, right? I know we can't change it, this is in the statute, so, you know, we can take it with its warts, you know? Is this something that is so important with all these warts that we as a community need to adopt, and it solves some serious problem? Or we look at it with the words and say, you know what, we're okay with that, we're doing pretty good. Seinville's a pretty good place right now. You know, we have zoning, it's financially infeasible to tear down a house in the Village unless it's insalvageable. And, you know, we have zoning ordinance now that limits lot size coverage, but, you know, there's lots of variances that are, I mean, that can be tied up on the same side.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Scott. Thanks for allowing the time to hear us. My name's Steve Scott, I live at 780 Laurel, and I believe the notion of Seinville's greatness being a homogenous image of some random selected point in time is wrong-headed, and that it's our continuing journey that matters. So I want to go maybe a slightly different direction than what other folks have been talking about. My wife, Trish, and I are established residents of the Village, having built a home here more than a decade ago. This type of ordinance is not new to us, we've seen it before. The historic town of Norcross, Georgia, which is our home before moving to Seinville, is now in its third iteration of a historic preservation ordinance, owning the nationally unique distinction of having implemented and rescinded a historic preservation ordinance twice before. This is because people often like the idea of such ordinances much more than they like actually living with them. Their current related controversy is a proposal from their commission, their newest commission started last year, for expanding their powers to include any and all art displays within the boundary of the district. We believe Seinville is better than this. We love Seinville. When we first moved to Indiana, we rented an apartment and frequently walked northside neighborhoods, including the Village of Seinville, and came to an important conclusion. The caramel options just felt too artificial. The Village was refreshingly authentic. The evolution of the architecture felt uniquely organic and eclectic. Seinville was the real deal. When we found a lot, we built our own unique contribution to the list of architectural styles that is the Village. We built a Charleston single house. Our home is not a native architectural style for Indiana, but by all, by all accounts, it has proven a valued contribution to the Village. Visible from our porch is a historic farmhouse, a Cape Cod, a Carolina beach house, a Frank Lloyd Wright, a 50s bungalow, two log cabins, a cottage, and an 80s suburban brick home. It's a diverse mix of architectural bungalows, styles that create a uniquely authentic Village feel, reflective of the cultural viewpoints that have contributed to it over 150 years, and this is what I came to say then. Diverse architecture matters. Diversity, inclusion are more than just words. These are words that represent a philosophical viewpoint, one that Seinville purports to support, a viewpoint that is actually embodied in the eclectic architecture of our Village District homes. Embracing the cultural, the diverse cultural viewpoints and aesthetics that will help us all to see things through the lens of others is a crucial part of developing an ever more inclusive community. This should be a priority for us all. Seinville's better than this. So I want to say shame on those who are shunning these values of diversity and inclusion. They need to see these architectural variations as an authentic, organic evolution of the way we live and chance to strengthen the very fabric of our community. Diverse architecture matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Hey, all right, come on, let's go. Up next is David Dam. Got a couple seconds to spare.
Thank you, David Dam, 155 North Main Street. My wife, Robin, and I are the lot next to the empty lot on Main Street, so we've got a lot of. So we've got a lot of emotion into tearing down homes and leaving an empty lot for over a year and a half. With that said, we also have a big concern with what we've seen as far as the documentation, that we're on a one-way ticket to who knows where the destination is. We need to put in some controls of if the commission is in there, we need approval that we're not taking away property rights before we take them. We need to take out the wording that says we automatically in three years turn to historic district when maybe a conservation district is all we want. Let's see what we, let's take it a step at a time and make sure that it works before we get on a one-way ticket here. I'm very concerned with the property rights. I don't know that anybody wants their property rights taken away from them, that a commission can decide this property is a point of interest, and now you're locked out of being able to do anything on it for over a year while that's debated. That's not the kind of property rights I had in mind when I bought a home here. So it's a couple of other points made, diversity of the architecture does matter, and that's kind of the village we're in. I don't want to see things torn down, especially when it leaves an empty lot, but I also don't want to see a mega mansion put up in there in place that's not protecting the covenants that are in place now on the zoning commission. So we need to have some teeth that we're protecting the covenants that are on the books now, instead of trying to pass this problem on to another group. And if we are going to pass it on to a zoning commission, it's going to give us some strength there, that's possibly okay, but let's make sure that we have that under control and it's not an iteration to getting to a historic district that I don't know that many people would enjoy being part of. Thank you for your time. Thank you for all your work and time put in so far. I know it's been laborious.
Thank you. All right.
Mervyn Cohen, 520 West Cedar Street in the village. The village of Zionsville is unique, certainly in Indiana, and must be preserved, its culture, its architecture, its heritage. And expanding this concept to other historic locations in the town of Zionsville is equally important. I understand the naysayers, "We're all naturally afraid of change." That's normal. But I would like to suggest a few things to them. Firstly, many people here and in Zionsville live in subdivisions. The homeowners associations in these subdivisions impose many restrictions that are tougher than what you'll find in the commission and the conservation district. Secondly, I've spoken to people who are scared and opposed to this new conservation district. What I gather from these discussions is the fears are based on misunderstanding. Let's just talk to two people who presented tonight. Firstly, I think many folk opposing this new ordinance don't truly understand the difference between the role of the zoning board and the conservation district. They're complementary, they're not in opposition to each other, and both are necessary for different reasons. Secondly, as I understand all of the new proposals, I can't find anything that is saying that there will be a homogenous architectural style in the village. This is not true. I would like to do two things in closing. Firstly, to thank all of those in getting us to this stage, Mark Walters, many on the council, and many, many other people. It's taken about three years to get to tonight's proposal. And finally, I truly like to thank the council for considering this new ordinance and strongly, strongly urge all of you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Meg Pernsky. Am I saying that right? Sorry for messing that up.
My name is Meg Pernsley, and I am the director of the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. I have been asked by a few folks here this evening to express my support for the initiative, but also to be here as somewhat of a sounding board and to help to maybe stamp out some of the confusion or concerns that might surround the designation process. My commission is a nine-member commission appointed by the city county council and the mayor's office in Indianapolis. We have jurisdiction over 17 locally protected historic districts and 15 individual sites. Some of them are conservation districts, as being discussed this evening. There's about 7,000 properties in Indianapolis that our commission has jurisdiction over, and we have a staff of six that manage that. And the process is very similar to the way your statute as proposed is. I'm happy to provide any clarification. The commission's been around since 1967, so we have a little bit of experience. I've personally been on the commission staff for 22 years, so I've seen, heard, and witnessed it all. Happy to share my thoughts, insights, or anything, if any questions about anything else, I'm happy to provide my input.
All right.
Hi, y'all. Thank you for having me and thank you for your time tonight. First of all, I just want to say, I feel like we're all rooting for the same thing. Like, there are so many people here who are against, who don't want to see houses turned down, don't want to see homogenous architecture, and that's what pro-side wants as well. So I think the important part is the commission is a place for us to work out how to balance those needs. So that's just a comment. I also just thought--
Lindsey, can I just have you state your address, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. 480 West Poplar Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. So I just thought I'd read real quick. I have been lucky enough to live in Zionsville since I was eight years old. My family sought out this town because of its character and community. After college, I moved away and lived in Chicago for several years. After having children and deciding to move back to Indiana, I swore that I wouldn't move home again. Yet after spending time looking all over Indianapolis and the surrounding suburbs, my husband and I both realized that Zionsville was 100% what we were looking for. As nice as other suburbs are, they do not have the character or community of Zionsville. The charm and history make it unique. We are unique. We hope our children will value individuality and want their community to reflect that. We bought a home in the village eight years ago, now have three children, and still feel 100% confident in our choice. We have a new home by village standards. It was built 20 years ago. I am not opposed to new development, but not at the cost of our historic character. Trends change, and I hope the village can continue to reflect a diversity of eras it has lived through. But in order to preserve this unique town for the future, the history has to be a priority in addition to the present. Please support the creation of a committee to create exactly the type of historic or preservation district this town needs to keep it a beautiful, diverse, and thought-provoking place to live. I feel confident this can be done in a balanced way that will address any concerns or fears that people have. It's time to move forward with this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Pettit, is that correct? I'm sorry? Fazette. Oh, very good.
All right. Danielle Fazette, 110 North Third Street, and I support the commission. This community is so, so special. Lindsey, I had the exact same thought. How just rad is it that there's all these people here who are literally trying to accomplish the same things, same thing, just maybe in a different, different way. So I am a transplant here, not originally from here. I moved to Indiana, never stepped foot in Indiana with 48 hours' notice with three-month-old, and I stumbled upon the village, and I did not know places like this existed. I truly didn't. I thought it was a lost space. I now, and I think it's worth preserving. I live in a home that's 154 years old. I am the current owner, but I am very aware that more importantly, I am the current caretaker. It will certainly outlive me, this house will. And it's my honor and my responsibility to safeguard its history. And I feel the same way about the historic homes in the village and everything that makes the village so charming. This place is worth protecting. And I just see this commission as the first step to figuring out how we do that. How do we ensure that the village will be preserved so that future generations can enjoy everything this amazing place has to offer? I want a family to move here out of the blue in 100 years and go, "I didn't know places like this still existed." And I think that takes time, attention, and focus. And so I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next, Lisa Sandy. Am I saying that correct?
Lisa Sandy, I live at 485 West Pine, and I just want to say that I support the creation of the commission.
Thank you. Up next, John Towesley.
He wants to know if he gets the extra minute from that guy, so he's going to come back up. He'll start borrowing minutes. He's always, I guess, "My name's John Towesley, and since 1982, I've lived in and has been spoke, been caretaker of a home in the village of 305 West Pine Street. It was built by John Hussey so that he could marry Susan May Aldrich. Living in an 18-year-old home in the midst of other older homes has instilled me a deep appreciation of the unique history and heritage those homes represent. They provide us with a sense of place that keeps drawing us and others to the community. I support the establishment of an historic preservation commission, and I hope that the ultimate resolution is that it's a conservation district. I understand tonight that you're not establishing an historic district or regulations, you're only considering the establishment of a commission that will help our community determine whether one or more historic districts should be established. If so, how those districts can be best preserved and enhanced is the start of a dialogue, the dialogue that we've needed, and we will continue to need in the future until it's addressed. I see this as a reasonable, measured, and indeed a conservative approach, addressing how to best preserve and enhance Zionsville's unique heritage and sense of place and source your sport. Mr. President, you asked it, we not repeat each other, try to add something unique, I suppose. About the only unique thing I can offer is that I'm an attorney, that's not unique, especially here. But over the period of time, I probably set up around 20 developments, done declarations, covenants, HOAs, and such. Variety of homes from first buyers to what was the most expensive condominium project in Indianapolis at its time, Bullion Green. And in every one of those, the builders and developers felt that a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions was necessary to enhance the value of the homes that they were selling, and for the buyers, the biggest purchase they would make in their lives. Now, if you know builders and developers, they're fairly cantankerous, very independent, and yet each one of those saw that there was a benefit in enhancing consistency, not homogeneity. Bullion Green was one of the most diverse condo projects you'll ever see. But there's something to be said for enhancing the consistency as opposed to allowing the hodgepodge that we see and will continue to see here in the village. So again, I urge your support and your vote for the ordinance tonight so we can begin our dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hello, my name is Mathene Bainer. I am the current restorer of 305 West Walnut Street, which was the Union Church, and I am restoring that because I didn't want to knock it down, and there were bids to knock it down. I am a longtime resident of Zionsville, living in the suburbs, and am so happy to be here. What I don't want is, for our historic village, the reason people come here, to be destroyed. And I think everything else has been so well-articulated, but that's that. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I don't know if it matters that Rinky, Bowman, and Jim Whalen are here, if you just FYI. I live at 285 Hawthorne Street, and I was going to be short, Amy, I promised, but I wanted to add a couple things here. First, Steve Scott mentioned the diverse mix and diverse architecture matters, and, oh my gosh, 100%, I think that's why all of us are here, exactly. As Lindsey said, that is, that is exactly why this is needed, to protect these unique properties. I mean, look at what happened to the house next to the David Dam's. The authentic home was once this cute little cottage that was in great condition, and now it's gone and obliterated, and it can't ever be brought back now that it's gone. I live in a historic house that was built by Laura Hussey's grandfather. The house next door was built by her dad, and she donated the library, might have heard of her. So right now, I actually live in fear that our two houses that have this incredible history will be razed and turned into apartments. That is a very legitimate fear. I wake up in the middle of the night terrified that this will happen because there is zero protection now for our home. Right now, anybody truly could come and buy our property and then do what they want with it. It's not eligible for a National Register for Historic Places designation because it doesn't have any key spot in history. I've done a lot of research on this recently, I know what our limitations are. This would allow us with our own personal property, it only affects us and our resale, to have that protection. It doesn't hurt anybody else for just us to have this, and that's what I appreciate about this committee, is they can look at these individual or two or three properties on a case-by-case basis rather than saying, "Hey, we're just going to plop this down in the middle of Zionsville." I don't think anybody really appreciates and understands that in this room. There's been so much confusion about it. The creation of a commission basically would allow for that protection. No commission equals no option for protection. I mean, basically, denying the commission is akin to a child breaking it twice so no one else can play with it. It's short-sighted. Please, I hope you will move forward with this commission so that we do have this opportunity for those of us who do want it for our own personal homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie Longman, and I am the owner and humble steward of 315 West Walnut Street. I grew up in Zionsville, went to the CHS, the whole shebang, absolutely love this town. I've never seen demolition like I have the last few years, and this is a trend that's not going anywhere. I live in a pretty small house, even for village standards, one whole bathroom. But I'm well aware in the current market, anyone who would be interested in my home, if I were to ever sell, would likely demolish it in favor of a house that by modern standards is more family-friendly, though I would like to point out that a Mr. Abraham Hall Martin, who built my house in 1868, raised three children there quite happily. So I very much support-- So I very much support the formation of this commission. I, I do think there's been a lot of misinformation spread, and that has been the shame here. But it, it's a pretty relaxed approach. It's not particularly strict, and I really look forward to hopefully enacting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Seacrest.
Michael Seacrest, three hundred West Oak Street. I moved for the commission, moved here two and a half years ago with my wife, and I lived in Fishers for thirty years before that. I was president of a homeowners association for three years, so I certainly understand that side of things. I have to admit, when I moved here, I was just shocked. I was floored. Had some good friends that lived here, had no idea that there was no, no conservation district, nothing was really in place. I think ultimately, the conservation district is hopefully what everybody's aiming for, which I've had friends of mine that aren't really that informed tell me they're worried about, you know, the bushes, all the comments you guys have heard that really aren't applicable. It really comes down to teardowns, which the lady mentioned earlier, moving your home, or if you're gonna have building plans for the streetscape that will affect other people. So, we live in a modest home, and I certainly wouldn't want to see a house torn down next to me that should be protected and then be three floors high and us being the shade. So, I am definitely pro for this. The biggest thing I would say is, let's not be caramel, let's not be Fishers where I live forever. People walk these sidewalks and these streets and go to these little shops because of the Zionsville historic nature of what we have here. So, definitely pro commission.
Thank you. All right, so there really is no way to, to confirm when these were turned in. I will go back and if there's anybody here, I've got Rinky Bowman, Michelle Schlegel, okay? Alex Overbeck and Jim Whalen. Sorry. Wrong stack. Yeah, Rinky Bowman or Michelle, either, either one.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm Rinky Bowman, ninety South Sixth Street. First, I'd like to thank you for all the time that you've put into this. It's a lot of stuff. And as village resident of forty years, I'm completely in favor of the ordinance and encourage you to adopt this and get a commission in place soon. Basically, that's my biggest point, and I'd also like to, for you to know that several years ago, I used to receive postcards and letters from real estate buyers wanting to buy, to buy our home, mainly because it's on a larger-than-normal-sized lot, and these buyers were most interested in purchasing and raising our home, tearing it down, to build a larger house. So, our home is now designated Sullivan Month Century Structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other of those names, those folks? See if anybody raised their hand? Okay, Michelle, is that right? Perfect.
My name is Michelle Schlegelmunch, Town Council President, Town Council members. My husband, Dan, and I have resided in the village at six fifty West Pine Street for nineteen years, and we are strongly in support of creating an Historic Preservation Commission and ask that you would protect our, our home and our village and be able to continue the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's it. Oh, sorry, Alex? No, Jim?
We need a new president.
I can't hear anything out of that.
Jim Whalen, one ninety South Sixth Street. And it's a home that was built in nineteen twelve, and I just want to say thank the council and all the people who've worked hard to get to this point. And I'm in favor of the ordinance to create a commission.
Thank you. All right. I don't believe so. These, these were the five that were against. I had one that was marked against, but it was all right. Thank you very much, everybody that spoke. Certainly appreciate, appreciate you participating and taking part in local government. All right, up next is the mayor administration update. Amy, do we have a mayor or administration update?
No, we do not.
Okay.
President Plunkett, could I give an update in lieu of, it's related, the mayor doesn't come to these meetings, or at least speak at these meetings? So, a quick refresh for everyone at home, because we've got a bigger crowd than normal. This council approved a new financial system, the mayor requested back in twenty twenty. Pretty good idea, our financial system was pretty old. Unfortunately, they shut the old system off before they started, or at least when they started working on the new system. So this council has effectively been without financials for the last eighteen months, which has been concerning. And we've been asking the mayor to give us an update on where we stand and have been met with only silence or Facebook posts. So, I just kinda want to give that context for where my comments are coming from. I will start with some good news in that this council did receive financials last week for last year and for January and February. I don't know the accuracy of those financials, but they were submitted to us, so that was good. I know Cindy Poor, who's been kind of a one-woman show since Tammy Havard was asked to leave, has been doing a yeoman's job to get that done. So thank you to Cindy for that. And we do have a new CFO. There was a question I asked at the last meeting that the mayor declined to answer, but we have a new CFO. She seems very qualified. She has a big job to do. I think her first day was today. So, we welcome her, but the problem is it doesn't really answer my three questions, and three questions that I've been asking, which are, what happened to put it in this, put us in this situation? We spent two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and have been without financials for eighteen months. Where are we today? So by getting the financials, does that mean we are now live? Is the system now up and running, or is there some sort of behind-the-scenes magic that's going on to get that done? And if that is happening, then what is it gonna take to get us to actual steady state? And so, I'm concerned because I'm not sure if the mayor doesn't know what's going on, or just is refusing to communicate to us what is going on. So I've tried to dig in a little bit on Facebook to find out. So back on March eighth, she said the, the last financial report sent to council was in December. So, I was concerned with that statement because that was the November incomplete financials, and she's saying in March as if that is good enough, and four months in arrears for financials is not good enough. But then she continues, and this is the mayor, saying, "Our switch to a new financial system has delayed financial reporting, but we anticipate resuming normal reporting this month." So, that at least answers my question, that she knows what's going on, if she's able to say that we're gonna get this reporting by the end of the month. Later on the town council's Facebook page, this is on March fifteenth, said, "Our finance department has been working to provide a new web-based financial transparency reporting tool, complete the switch to the OpenGov platform. OpenGov is the system that was picked." A little bit while later, it says, "We're getting close to having a robust citizen-facing financial experience." Now, I haven't seen any of this yet. I'm not sure if the citizens have seen this yet, which leads me to believe that I suspect the reporting we're getting is some sort of just middleware piece that's being done, and it's not actually being generated out of this system yet. And later, the mayor gave an update on March thirty-first, it said, "Our switch to a newer financial system has delayed monthly reporting, monthly financial reporting. Like Town Council, I am frustrated this has taken more time than anticipated." So, I now have more questions. I'm not sure how the mayor shares our concern, but refuses to dialogue with us about our concerns. If she shares our concerns, then why is she defending the lack of reporting earlier in March? How is she making financial decisions if we're not able to get financial information? And presumably, she's making financial decisions based on the same information. And I am not voting to pay our bills until I get an update from the mayor because I'm unsure what our financial situation is. So why does she continue to stay silent at the cost of our potential vendors getting paid? I also got a bunch of questions from the public as I've been continuing to go down this path. I'm amazed at the quality of talent we have here, you know, questions about, you know, was the contract reviewed? How many people hours have taken trying to implement this? These are questions from people whose job is to implement these ERP systems. This council has shown a willingness to support the mayor when she comes to us for money. We did it with the Oakland system, we did it with Winterfest, we've done it with the downtown parking lot. My problem is, things can go wrong, I understand that. But if things go wrong, and then the mayor is unwilling to answer questions as to why they've gone wrong, then why would we ever give her any more money? I mean, it's fine to, to give her money and something gets done, right? The parking lot in the village, right by the friendly, we appropriated money, that got paved, no questions, it's done. But when things go bad, I now know I'm not gonna get answers. So, as the fiscal responsibility parter, party for this town, if I can't get answers for the money I'm spending, or money that I'm spending, I'm just not inclined to do that, and that starts becoming a problem for everyone, because there are new things that come up. There's a proposal for a five-year park study today that seems like a good idea, but if that study goes wrong, no one's gonna answer my questions, then I really have no one to hold accountable for the money that I am spending outside of the normal budget process. And what I'm talking about here is non-budgeted dollars. When the budget is passed, there is flexibility within there to allow the administration of departments to spend that money. And I'm not questioning that. It's the additional money that we're asked to spend when it's not spent well, or if there's questions on how it's spent, to not get answers just leads me to then not want to say yes that next time. So, only the American decide if she wants to answer these questions or not. There are ramifications, though, of not doing that, because how are we supposed to support those projects if we can't get those answers? So, I appreciate the time because the mayor didn't take us up on this opportunity to share, to again, continue to share my concerns about what is going on.
I will give a brief update. I had lunch with the CFO, and I'm excited, excited for her start, and, you know, certainly enjoyed that time. And yeah, I think, I think that's gonna be a, a good addition, and I'm certainly, certainly happy, so. All right, up first on old business is a consideration of right-of-way encroachment appeal. This is continued from the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting. We have Darren Andrews and Lance Lance, if anyone would like to add to the last meeting. Either one of you? All right.
Yeah, your council had done some research on some neighboring communities to see what, if anything, other communities were doing. That had been shared with Councilor Melton. Probably with some spring break and people away, there really hasn't been a time for this bot, you, you to convene in a small group to determine if you want to make any type of policy change. So there's, I have something new to add, but I look forward to implementing any policy changes you may want to explore.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the, the thought was, after the last meeting, that we would be able to grab some information, details on surrounding communities. And Councilor Melton, I don't know if you're prepared to share that, or if that's something.
Well, I, I think there's a couple of perspectives at play here with regards to the streets, safety in the streets, and the actual structures being built near or over a street. Some of the key takeaways with the help of council, we were able to look into other municipalities surrounding us. I know we don't like to use this word in this chamber, Carmel has a ordinance that states, "No person shall play any game upon the streets." I just think that's interesting. Fishers has ordinances that focus on unsafe structures relating to those that create a public nuisance or hazardous to public health. Indianapolis discusses the space above and below public right-of-ways with regards to buildings and whether they're authorized or unauthorized. It also discusses it being unlawful to allow a child to play in the roadway under the age of twelve years old. Again, pretty restrictive and interesting. Noblesville has no permanent foundations with overhangings allowed. They also do, though, allow portable goals from May first to September thirtieth. So, reading that ordinance actually contradicts itself. It says nothing is allowed to overhang the, the right-of-way, yet it allows goals from May first to September thirtieth. I think that's something that they have to deal with, with regards to when there is a complaint. Other local municipalities like Whitestown, they review anything that is built permanently or asks to be built permanently in an easement or the right-of-way. Lebanon discusses overhangings, but it's primarily towards buildings. And then we have Westfield also. They discussed permits required for anything in the right-of-way that's an obstruction. So, with some of this information, I'm just pointing this out, these were kind of the takeaways from the information surrounding all the ordinances that were close to in regards to basketball goals. So, with that, I'll pass it to the rest of the council to kind of either think about whether there's an appetite to create or work up another ordinance. But I don't, I don't know that that's the, the topic of discussion at this juncture or not. But with, I will say with spring break, I, I made a few phone calls to Westfield and Fishers, to which I have not gotten a response back yet. Do you believe that has to do with spring break and the timing?
Yeah, so I think we've got a couple of things to consider here, right? I mean, the first is, there's an appeal request that we have to take some form of action on. And then the second would be, do we feel as a council, it's important to change the ordinance or modify it in some capacity? I thank you, Councilor Melton, and Heather, certainly thank both of you guys for gathering that information. Thoughts from the council or questions, comments, concerns, criticisms?
I think whether we want to rewrite an ordinance or not is perhaps a much longer conversation than what's before us now.
Yeah.
So in my mind, regardless of if we want to change an ordinance, there's still something to make a decision on today.
For sure.
So, and, and one thing I do recall the petitioner saying is that, I believe they said it was, it was a goal that they couldn't move. So, my personal thought is, as of today, it does not comply. If they can easily yank it out of the ground, we deny their appeal, and then revisit, okay, now is this ordinance something we want to, to amend? And if it gets amended and, and it's allowable at that point, they can, you know, plop that right back on the foundation that they've put down. That's, that's my thought.
I like that way of thinking. I'm sorry, what was that? I, I, I think that makes sense. I, I do start worrying about one-off approving because you insert arbitrarily saying like, all right, well, where do you do it? Even driving around my own neighborhood, like if someone wants to put something on the main drive, you say no to that, but then someone else puts one on the court, you say yes to that, and then you start. You know, I, I like kind of just a hard and fast, they're either allowed or they're not. And until we figure that out, I think it's most fair to, to, to let that be removed until that happens.
Well, and that's what we have now, right?
Yeah.
Either allowed or it's not, and again, to your point, regardless of what decisions we decide relating to the ordinance, we still have to make a decision on this tonight.
Do you want a motion, or are there more comments?
I mean, I, any other comments with counselors?
It just, you know, part of, part of kind of the appeal of being in neighborhood like Zionsville is watching kids play and building memories and things like this are, contribute to that, and I feel that things like this are, contribute to that. And I feel that, you know, and I'm going to support the petitioners on this myself, but I feel that if this gets repeated, that we do visit an ordinance that allows for these kinds of activities to happen in a safe and responsible way. And this is part of childhood and what growing up in a place like Zionsville is all about.
Sounds like you just volunteered.
I did not.
Yes, you did.
I am not being voluntold either.
That would be a great, great.
I think, I think either way, Alex, that whether or not we support the petitioner or not, I'm, I'm more inclined to support the current ordinance and deny that with the full understanding that I would also appreciate a fresh look at new language to see if there is something we want to do. And if, if in that time we, you know, create something that's a little more lenient, then they would be welcome to come back and do that. But I would judge, I would be cautious to, to approve a one-off. But either way, I think you need a good look at that. I'm not volunteering to do it, but I guess if you need someone to help, I will raise my hand.
I would encourage the petitioners not to jackhammer up the concrete they've poured just yet, just. But I would, I would make a motion to deny the current appeal.
Second. First by Counselor Trailer, second by Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign?
Neigh.
Motion passes six in favor, one opposed. I too would like to reiterate the comments of other folks on the council that I think this is really important to revisit this ordinance. I mean, this is, you know, to, I certainly hope that as my kids get older, I'm the house that my kids and their friends come to play. And, you know, you want to always know where your kids are. And I think this is just something that makes good sense to at least revisit, you know, soon. And I appreciate Councilor Milton's work and Councilor Burke and Troy's decision to help with all that. That's great. All right. Up next is a consideration, I'm sorry, this is new business. Consideration of a, of Zionsville Cultural District Special Event Fee Waiver Request. And we have Candace Olmer here to present.
Good evening. I'm Candace Olmer, 1880 South, 950 East in Zionsville. And I'm the chair of the Zionsville Cultural District Summer Concert Series. We've been doing the concerts in Zionsville since 2013 when we took them over from the then Chamber of Commerce at that time. And the reason why we did it was because it was going to be dropped and it had been enforced since 1994. And we felt as a district, our group, it was very important to keep this heritage going on with summer concerts, free concerts in Zionsville. After tonight's meeting being on districts, I'm going to circle back around a little bit. That will explain who we are and where that name is coming from. But I'm asking for this waiver, even though it's a hundred dollars. We are totally sponsorship and grant supported for these concerts. Last year, due to coming out of COVID where some contributions were hard on sponsors, I asked some residents and they chipped in. Otherwise, it would have been a little iffy had we had three months of concerts in Zionsville last year. Our main granters that we get things from are the Boone County Visitors and Convention Bureau and the Indiana Arts Commission, which is. So that's why I'm asking for this waiver of this fee. Last year was the first time I encountered it. I also, after watching a plan commission meeting, want you to maybe consider a sunset clause of the, for five years. We're going to be 10 years in existence next year at 2023, the Zionsville Cultural District. And we plan to be around here for a long time and we plan to just make summer concerts in Zionsville bigger and better and always free to our community. Now, we were formed in 2012 to apply for cultural district with the Indiana Arts Commission. So this is a statewide district. At the time we first applied in 2012, the then Zionsville Town Council approved it. But we've been turned down the last three times by the Indiana Arts Commission itself. And the persons we are competing against to get this status, she would say, which is nothing more than a sign where you might come into town that says cultural district. That's it. There's no monies, no nothing other than that. But it's Bloomington, the arts district, Madison, Indiana is a cultural district. Fishers, the nickel plate, is a cultural district and Noblesville. The other thing, while we are working our way silently on this, they changed it to where the town itself has to apply to be a cultural district. And we felt as our organization, we needed to get more projects that we are doing so that it can support the town whenever we bring it up, a town government, whomever at that time, to move forward. The projects we've done, you see, you've seen are the Lincoln Memorial across from Lincoln Park, and we did that in conjunction with the then Town Council helped us with that. We've also had what you've seen sidewalk poetry. You might have seen some of the poems on some of the sidewalks in the neighborhoods and on the main street around town. We also did the Dahlia control box down there on 106th Street. We are working on a grant. We did get from the town for what we're calling it pop art, but I'm calling it more of like a selfie station that has art where people can stand in it and get their photograph and everything. As a cultural district, when we do these summer concert series, we are paying $400 to $750 per band. Our competition with Whitestown and Caramel and Fishers and everybody else are paying anywhere from $1,200 to $1,800 a band. So this is why I'm wanting you to waive this little a hundred dollars so I don't have to worry about that. And this is why we're always kind of focusing on, you know, grants and sponsorship to help us with these series. We want to continue it in Zionsville and I just ask your help in letting me get rid of this a hundred dollar fee.
And that's a hundred dollars per event, per concert?
No.
Or is it just overall?
The special event fee once a year when I have to apply for it, and it's really just for the Lincoln Park series. I don't have to apply, apply for it for the June and July concerts, which are in Lyons Park. It's just Lincoln Park.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to waive the with the fee request.
Second.
So first by President Plunkett, second by Counselor Garrett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, ever zero opposed.
Can can we go ahead and make a motion? I know we made a motion for this year. Can we make a motion for following years? That way they, you know, because for a hundred bucks, you know, I'm sure, you know, Candace has other things she'd rather do on a Monday night.
So. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we, we could always just add that as a town-sponsored event or whatever.
Good, good idea. Yeah.
Next year at fees.
That's all right.
When we, when we adopt the fees.
Okay. Maybe. Remind us.
Keep us, remind us if, yeah, I know you will.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem.
Thank you.
All right. Perfect. Up next is a wastewater utility capacity discussion from Lance Lance.
Well, my apologies to everyone here this evening because I'm certain you did not come for this.
I was thinking the same thing. This is the biggest crap you've ever had.
This is, this is important. This is important in the business of the town, and we have had the question posed to us of where we stand with our current wastewater system, capacity wise, and what is our ability to continue to provide service to new customers? With me this evening, although they did not leave to their feet, Danny Stockdill. And if anyone has missed the recent information, Mr. Stockdill is now the Wastewater Division Supervisor for the town. So we're very excited to let Danny take the reins of that organization and lead it into the future. Also is George Lewis, our Town Engineer on staff. So we're going to talk a little bit about capacities, where we are this evening. We're not going to get into budgetary talks. We're not going to get into project talks. We're going to try and give you the answer to where we are right now. In 2021, we engaged American Structure Point to conduct a capacity study of our wastewater utility. It's been many, many years, if possibly ever, that we have taken this much of an in-depth look at our system and a quantification of what we do. And there are two main components of this. There is first the collection system. This is a series of pipes and pumps and things out in the field that bring the waste up from your homes and businesses to the wastewater treatment plant. And also, of course, the second part being the plant itself. How much waste can we process in 24 hours? And we are categorized and rated as a 2 million gallon per day or 2 MGD dry weather flow plant. This is how I D M classifies are in any wastewater treatment plant. However, there are imperfections in any system, so we can ignore other factors such as wet weather flows. When it rains, the flows increase within the system and the flows increase through the plant. And one of the things that emerged from this study was the solids loading. And that's how much waste there is in wastewater. Now, I know probably when you think solid, I know what came to your mind, but there are many, many foreign materials that make its way into our system. This can be granular like dirt, grit, just in the process of our living our lives, washing our dirty clothes, et cetera. So that emerged as another controlling factor in our evaluation. We're going to touch briefly on the collection system. We're going to focus on the plant. Here on the right side of your screen, you see our sanitary sewer service territory as recognized by I D M. That's the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. That is a regulatory agency that oversees our operations. Just to get you oriented, if it's not evident immediately, on the right side, that bold line is US 421 Michigan Road. Our northern border is County Road 300 South. On the western edge of our service territory, let's just call it County Road 800 East. I don't know if my cursor will show up here to give you any kind of on-screen indications. I'm sorry, it does not. Then, of course, the south is the county line there, and you can see H65 passing across the bottom of that service to sewer territory. At the heart of our system is our wastewater treatment plant on Starkey Road. Used to be once more centrally located. It is obviously not now. And leading to that plant are a series of pipes. Now, don't get hung up if you recognize this map and kind of see where things are oriented. Don't get hung up on specific locations. This is representative of the, the handful or half dozen or plus main trunk lines that kind of bring all these smaller tributaries to our plant. And as the colors would suggest, we have pipes that are at good capacity levels, meaning we can provide ample service within those pipes capacities. We have pipes that are at limited capacity. We have pipes that are at maximum capacity. I will make one qualification statement here. When we say maximum capacity, we need to look at these pipes under all flow conditions. On a nice, dry August day, you're probably getting a trickle flow through these pipes. But when we're getting the spring rain, we're getting a lot of extra water into our system that shouldn't be there, then they are at capacity. So we have to look at these at a range, in a range of service conditions. This study was mostly theoretical in that how much pipe can it carry? You got a pipe this big. It's that steep. It can kind of flow this much with gravity. Our pumps are this big. They can pump that uphill when it needs to. When we look at this theoretical analysis based on kind of standard capacities, where we identify pinch points, we can actually go out and put in flow meters and take specific readings to either corroborate or contradict what the suppositions may be of various flow in various pipes. We are doing that. These are actual locations where we are and will be soon taking actual flow readings. So that's all we're going to talk about as far as the plant, as far as the collection system capacities go. So let's get to the plant and let's jump right to it. Where are we based on the report study that we has conducted by Structure Point? Our dry weather flows are official plant rating criteria is at 56% capacity, 56% of those 2 million gallons per day's capacity. However, we did touch on solids and those are at 70% capacity. And when we look at wet weather flows, we are at 80% capacity. Now, don't get too alarmed at that higher figure. We're going to get more on the wet weather flows here shortly. So what does this F G D and percent capacity mean? We all think in terms of houses. All right. And the national standard says that one home uses and discharges 310 gallons per day. This 310 gallons per day is referred to as an equivalent dwelling unit or EDU. So anytime you see the word EDU, think a home equivalent. When we get into commercial uses, we still maintain this valuation system. We've got a commercial building based on the uses therein. We look at actuarial tables and we can expect this to yield about 11 and a half homes worth of waste. And so in this example, our office building is 11.5 EDUs. Multiply that by that standard of 310 gallons per day, and we can expect about 3,500 gallons per day from that commercial. So this is the background of the information that we use when we're quantifying where we are as far as capacities in the plant. So if we take a quick, use that example of the home equivalency, we are at 56% dry weather capacity, which means we are experiencing a measured flow of 1.12 MGB under normal dry weather conditions. If we divide that by the 310 gallons per day, we arrive at the fact that we should have around 3,600 customers served by our utility. However, when you look at our customer service, our customer database, we have over 4,900 single-family residential customers and 263 commercial customers. So what? We got over 5,200 people, but we're only getting flows of 3,600 homes. What that means is that homes are using less water. Now, I say this and explain this because we use a real, we want to use a real number when we estimate the capacity remaining. We want to use standards when we have to, but when we can get local, specific data of what we're experiencing, we would much prefer to use that. Why are we less than the, the national average, other than the fact that it's a fairly old figure? Modern sewer materials, of course, we're all familiar with the low-flow fixtures that are pretty much a standard requirement in home construction, reconstruction, advanced special water use. Dentist offices are a prime example of this. If you've been to the dentist, most of them are switching from the old rinse and spit method to a suction vacuum. So as these businesses look at ways to reduce their bills and their water uses, we enjoy then having to process less wastewater, perhaps smaller families, perhaps we have less people per unit here locally, but certainly there are conservation efforts. And this is kind of an encouraging point here that maybe we're all learning to turn the water off when we brush our teeth and make changes to our behaviors to conserve water, again, resulting in less water going down the pipes. When we take this now adjusted 215 gallons per day, as opposed to 310, and we look at the remaining 0.88 MGD capacity, we look like we have about 4,093 EDUs available yet at our plant. 4,093 homes or their equivalent. This is dry weather only, though. We haven't got a couple other figure, a couple other factors to consider yet there. But if you look at basically historically seeing about 200 new residences or residential equivalents, this suggests we're kind of okay for about 20 years. Now, we're certainly not going to run right up to the very end of this. We're not going to wait till our bucket is splashed over before we design a better bucket or a bigger bucket. But this is the background information leading up to the big reveal. So as we look at the other two factors and we get back to the solids management, the waste and wastewater, we're going to get kind of technical here just for a moment. So we got a new term alert. BOD, that is a biological oxygen demand, which is a measure of the amount of oxygen required to remove waste organic matter from water in the process of decomposition by aerobic bacteria. If you didn't get that, let's just for the sake of our discussion, think of BODs as a mass or a solid, okay? Again, solids, our plant capacity, our ability to process the solid material in the effluent coming to the plant is 3,170 pounds per day. Our current loading, which we can measure, is 2,183 pounds per day. Our average BOD, and this is a national standard, is 0.44 pounds per household of this solid waste generation within the wastewater effluent. Again, following that same simple approach to the mathematics, we arrive at the figure of now 200 or 2,243 EDU. So now, when you think solids as a limiting capacity, we're down from 4,000 plus to around 2,200. Again, that same roughly 200 new customers a year or customer equivalents, we're okay for about 11 years. Finally, we get into wet weather, and that was that alarming 80%, 80% capacity that you saw upfront. When we make this little graph here, at the bottom, we have our two MGD, our base flow capacity rating, our four MGD, which is our wet weather capacity rating. And then six MGD appears on this because we can process 6 million gallons per day for a few hours in extreme events without compromising the treatment process. So we always have this base flow. You can see there starting at the bottom, we're somewhere in that 56%, almost halfway to two MGD. But we always have that base flow. But what happens when we get a major rain event? What we see is during significant rain events, and these are these three, four-inch during significant rain events, and these are these three, four-inch rains. These aren't just an inch or two here and there, and it's seasonally dependent, right? A rain in August is not going to have nearly the impact that a rain would have in March. So we can see our flows triple at the plant. But of course, yet we're not at that 4 M G D peak. But as we look to add users to the system and we look to approach that baseline to M G D plant rating for dry weather flows, we still have to keep in mind that we're going to get this extra water when we get rain events. And we have what we'll kind of lightly call our fudge factor up there where we can operate up to 6 million gallons per day briefly without compromising. This red box fortunately is relatively consistent as new plumbing systems serve new customers. These are much better systems. We're not getting that I N I or infiltration and inflow that we get out of the old systems. Now, how does that get in? I don't want to make anyone feel like their system does not have great integrity and that we're out there taking in water and leaching stuff out. Okay? When you look at this as a top-down, it's not really, there's not a great seal, if you will, of the top. Manholes are open. Water heated into manholes. Water can get right into our plant because it's just nothing but a bunch of big open tanks. So we're always going to fight this and every system does. I've always personally believed that some pump connections, which are illicit, illegal, are probably the most major contributor. And as new development comes online, you do not get the some pump connections because now we design these with redundant systems just for some pumps. So that amount of of extra flow that we don't really want to see is going to remain a fairly constant amount. Of course, the plant staff, our plant staff manages wet weather flows extremely well. So wet weather, although it's the highest percent, is not a limiting or controlling factor here. A high percentage of a high number is still a high number, and we'll get and see that here momentarily. But how often does that happen? How often do we get the radical flows in our system? When we take a look at this graph and you can't read it, but as well, I'll just tell you, this is from 2016, 2016 to 2020, a five-year period. There was one time in that five-year period where we exceeded that 4 M G D wet weather capacity threshold. I will say now in 2022, we have already done that twice. So this is unpredictable and volatile and seasonally dependent. Wet weather, I'm going to skip through this, okay, because this was my attempt at some funky animation, but try and get you guys out of here. The point was when we get in these extremely high water flows, we get a lot of rain. The way the flow is metered or measured as it leaves the plant is based on a gauge that floats up and down. So when we get these extreme rain events, what happens? Well, Eagle Creek rises too. So is this gauge reading the depth of the flow leaving the plant, or is it actually recording the elevated levels of the creek? Can't always be sure. So there is some degree of speculation and interpolation. So when we apply that, again, in that same mathematical approach, we have a 4 M G D flow capacity for wet weather. We're at 3.25 M G D is what we're calling our wet weather typical experience. So we have 0.75. Again, same precepts as before. This would suggest we're now trending upward again. We have around 3,488 available E D Us. Again, these are isolated incidents. We are not designing to a catastrophic event. We're not planning for a catastrophic event, but we certainly cannot ignore the need when it happens. Going back to the study, one of the other valuable pieces of information it addressed is what's out there now and what's going to be needed in the future? Where are we going to be when our service territory is completely developed some point in the future? There are close to 900 existing and potential future properties served by septic systems. Septic systems are not the best, and we want to always make sure we make provisions to provide alternatives for people to septic systems and eliminate particularly focus on eliminating the older septic systems as we've been talking about recently here before you. There are around backing up, sorry, I'm getting itchy. There are around 500 E D Us of new commercial areas in the long, long range of development. And there's about 2,900, well, let's just say, single-family residential new E D Us out there that could be realized in the future. So if you read, if you happen to read this report, we take our existing flow of 1.12 M G D, we add all these future loading requirements for future development using that standard 310, not our own experiential rate, because we do to build some fluff in there. We need to make sure that we're not running on a razor-thin margin. We see that we need in the future a 2.5 M G D plant. We're currently at two. We need to be at 2.5. We have adequate space at our existing site to expand to the future capacity needs of our entire service territory. All right, here's a number that I have rambled on, and you just probably said skip to this. All right, you take into consideration all these factors, and I'm going to go back to reminding you that our limiting capacity is currently our solids management. There's too much solid material being pushed through the plant. So we're going to call it 2,243 E U's. That's where we are as far as plant capacity. That's the additional areas that we can serve right now. When you look at the math, that still puts us at a 10-year horizon. Again, I reiterate, we're not waiting until the 9.5th year, 9.5 years. We will begin making systematic improvements very, very soon. If you want to call it a percent, call it 65, call it 76% if that makes anybody feel better. But again, having a percentage of an unknown quantity doesn't really help us. This is a number. This is a number you should take away this evening. Just wrapping up here, this informs us on decisions as new development is faced. This is representative, we're aware of what's been approved, what's going to be built and is reliably going to be built in the next few years, five, seven, possibly 10 years. We've been talking about our septic elimination efforts to extend septic sewers. We're looking at potentially having 350 customers that could eliminate their septics and connect to our sanitary sewers. So we need to make sure we always have this capacity. And finally, we want to make sure that we have capacity for commercial development. We never want to find ourselves delaying a diversification of our tax base for any reason, and certainly not for sanitary sewer. So these are kind of reserved capacities, if you will, which leaves then if you do the math and you do some subtraction around 1,193. Now, you'll notice that all my numbers are like 3, 5, they're not round numbers. I did that. So when you revisit this at home, right? You can follow the math, all right, but we don't get to that level of precision, but I wanted the trail of math to be logical. So then finally, a brief look ahead. I know we didn't, I said, we're not going to talk about specific capital projects, but within the next two to three years, we're going to need to implement some capacity increase, increasing projects as well as processing efficiency, start addressing the wet weather flows and the solids. Okay, those are our first hurdles which we have to overcome. And this lines up nicely. If you recall, we're looking at about a two-year program right now, which is going to tie up a lot of our our capital reserves to invest in our system to get it to these homes now that are served by septic systems, many of whom are failing. In 2022, we will continue this discussion, yay, as we look at a rate study. Hasn't been a long, it has been a long time since we evaluated the rate study and the needs of the plant and to make sure that we are adequately collecting what we need. And we will, of course, develop some longer-range capacity project in more specificity in tonight on how we get at those solids managements and wet weather flows. And I'll close by saying there has been no major capacity increase in our plant for 20 years since we went from a 1 M G D to 2 M G D plant. Sorry, that was lengthy, but this is important stuff in our world, and there was a specific answer in there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I hope I have bored you to tears and you're ready to press on.
So if you go back one slide, Lance, when you're talking about near-term planning consideration, over what period of time are you looking at those increases?
Well, this is what you take that top, for example, that's kind of currently approved development. That'd be subdivisions, commercial development that has been approved, but is yet building out, you know, you've got an estimated time for a build-out for a subdivision, then you get an actual time. But we know that if the market stays as active as it is, that these are reliable demands that are going to be coming in near-term because they are approved projects. Did that get at your question?
My concern is when you put reserve for commercial 10% of 50 E D Us based on what you talked about that a commercial project includes about 11.5 E D Us, that it doesn't seem like that's an aggressive forecast.
Well, you also have to think, I grabbed 10% of the E D Us. My point is, this is when you get into forecasting, everything's going to overlap. You know, you could have a new development come in right now to get approved and outpace any other commercial or any, excuse me, any other developments going on. So this is more of a concept that I wanted to espouse this evening, which is we can't go blindly assigning and giving away E D Us for the first residential development to come along. We know we always have to have this kind of rolling availability. So and again, the commercial example was very theoretical. Your smaller bill, your small businesses, they're the same as a house. So they're not such a radical departure. You know, not everything is a Rahal Letterman or a Lids-type facility.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning.
No, no, we think, we think this is a comfortable and reasonable. Again, not to get caught up in, you know, specific percentages or amounts, but we are making sure that we always have the capacity that we can roll with development. We're going to be able to meet development needs for the foreseeable future.
So the bottom line is we're okay.
The bottom line is we're okay right now. But we need to begin in two to three years making aggressive changes.
Thanks, Lance. Always thorough. I anticipated the big reveal was going to be some kind of price tag, our potential price tag. But I guess the question I have is moving from the system we have to what you projected we'll need, which is the 2.5, right? Is that something that could be more part of an upgrade or is that a replace?
Absolutely. No, this is, we are not throwing the baby out with the bathwater or blowing anything up. We will be supplementing, we modifying some processes now and supplementing amenities at the plant, but not at all is this a blow-up situation.
You say modifying processes, these process improvements that are being rolled out. Is this an industry kind of improvement issue, or is there something in particular that will be built onto it to modify the processes?
There are supplemental things like new tanks. Okay, a new tank is a very clear and obvious capacity increase because you can hold more, you can process more. When I talk to process modifications, when you follow the trail of waste effluent through the plant, you can look at what happens first, and maybe that sequence right now is not optimal. Maybe you can reverse the process. So these are tweaks and not major changes. And if you think I this isn't specific, this isn't accurate or correct. Let me take that back. Why am I saying that if it's not accurate or correct? This is an example. If you've got, when you talk about solids, you might have a screen in place. All right, so you're filtering the effluent through, and that screen may have a very fine, very small openings. Okay? So perhaps that one screen that catches everything at one point could be replaced by two screens staged apart and first capture extremely large material and then follow that up with smaller material. So process changes again will be improvements to what we're doing. After we evaluated and continue to evaluate is what we're doing the best way. You always find little things based on this study. Now that we have this information, we're confident we're going to find ways to do things economically that's going to get it specifically in the solids management.
Thank you. Lance, on these numbers here, the 1,193, that's approximately what 30% of your overall capacity that you have left. Is that correct? You mentioned 4,093 E D U in the dry weather.
Well, what were, what were the number that I want you to, if you, if you want to put a number to this, is that number right there? Okay, so just to give an example of how we use this to inform decisions, I was saying here, we always need to make sure we have enough to serve what's already been approved because we know it's reliably coming online. We may owe for a dry spell. We may not get residential development for a couple of years. You know, that's not predictable. So that 1,193, just in this hypothetical example is what's left after you take the 2,200 and change, and you kind of make sure we've always back-pocketed some of these E D Us for near-term reliable demand. And this is kind of what's, we'll say free E D Us or available on a first-come, first-served.
With regards to the, the the cause of the water in the sewer pipes, you kind of mentioned, you know, manholes being loose or, you know, gapped or whatever. And then you mentioned some pumps ejecting illegally into sewer systems. What is the, that predominantly occur in our city or town, excuse me?
It's the older areas, the older areas of town.
Downtown Zionsville, would you, is that?
When you get it to, there were kind of two questions there. One is where are the some pumps? And those are going to be in the village. They're going to be in subdivisions that were, say, pre-1980s. Because it just wasn't thought about at the time, a some pump was aligned to your backyard and that's it, right? And then what happens? Your yard gets soggy. So let's find the nearest place we can connect. Hey, nobody sees in my basement. I'll plug it in here. So up until the 90s, I would say anything, you know, into the 80s and pre-90s is going to have the high probability of some illicit some pump discharges. Now, when you talk about the system integrity, that's much more broad. The age of the system varies across a lot of areas. We have done a lot of rehab work, pipelining, manhole linings over the recent years, I'd say over the last 15 years to plug those holes, but you can't plug them all. There's just no way.
Is there any programs that the town would offer or could consider offering to have homeowners self-regulate and make that connection or that disconnect? And then we supply them with a proper drainage? Is that, is that, I mean, is that a solution? Is that, does that help?
There, that has actually occurred in the early 2000s where there was a some pump elimination program that targeted Colony Woods. The it did seem to at the time, and we're going back away, so forgive me if I don't recall any specific details. It did show a reduction in flows in that part of the system and then arguably or logically at the plant as well. It's a continuous, it's a, it's unsustainable, in my opinion, because first of all, it was met with a good deal of opposition. It was an intrusion into privacy. It required going into homes or showing evidence through photographic means that some pumps had been disconnected. But if you don't keep going back over and over to all these areas, they just get reconnected. They'll disconnect, they'll put them in the backyard. Providing adequate surface drainage is a monumental task. I would rather fight this battle at the plant than fight it all over our countryside.
Thank you.
But that's just me.
Lance, is your department plugged into Planning Commission or the Planning Department so that as new neighborhoods are proposed, you can anticipate the capacity needs and also those groups, whether it's Planning Commission or Up to Town Council, is aware that what's coming will not seriously impact what exists?
Absolutely.
So you'll warn us if something's coming that might cause a hiccup.
You'll probably know before I do.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
I mean, that's the worst.
I don't think I've ever seen anybody get a round of applause over a sewer speech. I mean, that, that's a good speech right there.
Last, take it on the road.
Last meeting, he referred to himself as the killer of dreams.
This meeting, he's getting.
I call that a crappy speech.
Oh, boy. Welcome to Boo.
I have, thank you.
All right. Up next on the agenda is consideration of additional appropriation resolution for the Parks Master Plan. This is Resolution 2022 dash 04. This is a public hearing. I have proof of publication right here. I will open the public hearing. Anybody would like to comment? I'll close public hearing. Jared, you're up.
How do you follow a mentor like that?
But I'll try. Thank you, councilors. Jared Logs and Superintendent of Parks and Rec. Earlier this year, we began the update process for updating the master plan from 2018. The master plan serves as an opportunity to engage the public and have a conversation about what they want, what they need and some emerging trends in the park and recreation industry. So we take that information and we compile an actionable plan and a roadmap to get there. So it's important to update these documents, not only to check in with our relevancy as our community continues to grow and change, but it is also a requirement from the Department of Natural Resources to remain eligible for funding of which we've received over $2 million in the past couple of years. So rather historically, this process has been a conversation with the community on the physical improvements of our park system. This year, we're looking to take a fresh look at this process and not only look at our facilities, but also our This year, we're looking to take a fresh look at this process and not only look at our facilities, but also our programming, operations and look to the future. So this will be a more holistic approach at all the pillars that make up the Parks and Recreation Department. So we will build upon the information from previous master plans and identify new projects for the next five years. But we're also looking beyond that. So within this RFP that was released to firms, there is an ADA audit so that we can remain accountable of our facilities and make sure that we are removing barriers to make sure that everyone can plan our park system. That audit will identify those barriers and also make recommendations and assign dollar amounts so that we can budget that, budget that appropriately in the future. In addition, it will also inventory our capital items in the park system today and create our capital replacement plan so that we can properly budget as those systems begin to fail and need replacement in the future. So that's our bridges, that's our plate structures, that's our shelters. And from beyond that five years, we're also looking to the future as Zionsville continues to grow. So we want to take a comprehensive book and rule Zionsville and have a land acquisition plan that we can implement into our policies and procedures. So as development continues to grow, we can have those conversations to protect those natural corridors, high quality habitat, and make sure that green infrastructure is equitable throughout our town as it continues to grow. And finally, we will have a staffing report and recommendations made. So as we continue to grow and add parkland and new amenities, we will have the staff involved to support those operations successfully. So all of those were included in the scope of work for an RFP that was released. We had four firms respond, of which we comprised a committee of park board members and staff to review those and hear interview presentations from our top two finalists. So tonight before you, I'm requesting an additional appropriation of $115,000 from Fund 103 to execute the scope of work defined within that RFP and provide you a new five year master plan to begin implementing next year. Fund 103 was created in 2001 as the Parks Department, as an isolated fund entered into the general fund. At that time, there were cash savings of $2,807,336. I'm sorry, that is the amount that is in there today, 2.8 million. From that fund that was created last year, we have assigned three projects. That is the Heritage Trail Phase Two, the Carpenter Master Planning Process and the Golf Course Cart Path Improvements. So after all those invoices written from those projects that were already allocated, we will be sitting at approximately 2.18 million remaining in those earmarked funds specifically for park initiatives. Happy to answer any questions in addition to that information.
Jared, the 115K, is this something that could have been or might have been included in the 2022 budget? Or why, why was it not included at that time, even though it was going to come out of Fund 103?
This was included in the budgeting process, but it was taken out, you know, to absorb staffing adjustments with our compensation study and all of the capital projects for the park system were pulled out to be, have this conversation as additional appropriations throughout the year.
Is the Fund 103, is that a completely restricted fund to parks or is that somehow now tied to general fund?
So, yep. So as the Parks Department entered into the general fund, these were the cash balances and savings from the Parks Department. So they are their own fund and once they're gone, they're gone, at which point we'll enter the larger conversations with the other departments. So these Fund 103 are specifically earmarked for parks initiatives.
So even though it was taken out to account for salary adjustments, it seems like that wouldn't have been a, an allocation that would have been allowed to come out of Fund 103. So just, it seems like it doesn't make sense that it was taken out of the 2022 budget if it was money that was part of a $2.8 million fund that had plenty money in it to fund this 115K.
I think the, the uncertainty of the financial situation at the time required a flat budget and which in 2022, we have these conversations during each additional appropriation request so that we can both be on the same page moving forward with these large requests.
So I'm, I'm a little confused on this, Jared. This was pulled out of last year's budget in order to get a balanced budget.
This was included in the early drafts of the budget that I submitted and through the process, this was taken out.
Right.
Along with other park improvements.
So that's what I understand. So the mayor proposed to us a balanced budget with these items removed. It seems like with the anticipation that it would come back to us at a later point to be asked for appropriation, which to me does not spell a balanced budget. So this is not directed at you, Jared, obviously, but this is just a comment to the rest of council. Does that seem to make sense what I just said?
Well, this, this is the whole discussion we had around budget was the only way to make it quote unquote balanced was to remove however many millions of dollars worth of capital expenses and then come back to us because it was already an operational deficit, even with those removed.
And remember what I said back then was we're passing an operational deficit budget.
Right.
We're going to come back and spend the reserves down to support this operational deficit. And I hope that you don't come back to us at a later point and ask for these projects to be approved again. Because that does not spell to me a balanced budget. That's just kicking the can down the road with a deficit budget that we are now pretending is balanced and coming back later to ask for more money.
It's a shame, Jared, because this is a very worthy project and I sat on, you know, your liaison to the budget when you get talked about this with the Parks Board and Park was because so many other expenditures come to us. And if we don't have it part, as part of a five year plan, I think we're kind of shooting from the hip as opposed to really being strategic about how we're using dollars for the next five years. So I think this is critical and I kind of wish it hadn't been cut from the budget because it kind of means you're flying blind for the next five years and as you bring projects to us and/or as you come to the budget for 2023. So but to Alex's point, it's, it's frustrating that that it's not in there and it was a bit, it appears like it was a bit of a workaround from a balanced approach, but I'm having to think about this one.
I think I'd be more supportive if I understood where our financials stood. I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think it makes sense. I think councillor Troy, your point is spot on in terms of just balancing a budget for show and press releases and then spending it through appropriations turns into a deficit. It's not a bad idea, but I just wish I could get some questions answered unrelated to this, but related more to the macro financial situation that drives decision making.
Yeah, I'm completely frustrated because we were asked to pass what looked like a balanced budget back then to then come to us with proposals that are great and should be approved, but then we're taken out of the budget in order to make them appear balanced. This is very frustrating to me.
I think it's important to also note that this is not an operational expense per se. This is a capital item that is done every five years. So while it should have been anticipated with every fifth budget, this isn't within the normal operating year to year. And this is coming from Fund 103, which are specifically cash reserves for the park system. So those funds cannot be utilized for covering any other capital requests throughout the town.
Well, I think, I think the frustration that you'll hear from this council is, is over and over again throughout that budget process, we were asking for what's needed from each individual department. And we were told that the things that were pulled out were essentially optional and that we would have to come back and do it later. And it seems like.
This doesn't sound optional.
I mean, it's frustrating, right? I mean, it's, it's, it sounds like it's something that to everyone's point is needed and should have been included in the budget. And it's frustrating that it's a capital, that it's coming, it's coming to us as an appropriation and it's not part of the original budget for the, or I'm sorry, the approved budget for the parks. It frustrates me.
Jared, you mentioned five year plans are needed to apply for grants. What year are we on on our current five year plan?
The current five year plan was 2018 to 2022. So this 10 month process will be, well, 10 week process will begin, you know, upon approval and wrap up in December to be presented to both you and the park board. And it has to be adopted mid-January by DNR.
So what are the things that we go for, go if we don't approve this five year plan?
So within the past four years, we have received the land conservation, land water conservation fund grant, which was a 50 50 match for $400,000, so 200,000 there, as well as the next level trails grant, which is currently funding our southern expansion, trailhead and northern expansion, which was $1.8 million. So approximately 2 million right there in the past five years within this plan that we would have been ineligible for.
So in order to continue that, we have to approve of a five year plan?
Yes, we have to have a park board established, which we're good there. And then every five years, we do have to have this community engagement document that creates an actionable path for the next five years.
Again, this does not sound optional.
This is the exact same way the budget process was presented to us for the last two years. We're literally in a spot where if we don't make a decision, we lose this. Just like if you don't pass the budget, we go back to last year's, this is.
Well, I, I, I can tell you much like the email that I sent last week where, you know, we were just a kind of a, well, different topic, but we were addressing money that was not budgeted for the mayor's action center and to move her office to the back of the upstairs and behind a couple more locked doors. That money was not approved by a budget or this council and was spent anyway. And when we, when we questioned it at the time of claims, we were told, hey, we've, we're in contracts with these builders. If you don't pay these claims, we're going to be sued. And then last week, we get an email where, hey, during claims was your opportunity to deny those things. It's, you know, you can't have it both ways. So unfortunately, this, this game that's being played by the administration is, can't continue to happen. So unfortunately, it penalizes real people. But I'm, I'm done letting the, the mayor manipulate the council, at least on my end. So you know, I'm going to, I'm going to start making it really difficult by not voting for things like this so that we can get a little more transparency. And I think unfortunately, the only way to, to make her accountable is to not, not give her what she wants when it's not planned and not discussed.
We'll just make one more comment about the structure of the park board in Indiana and their role in the long-term planning for a park system to be independent of other structures within the town. I understand town council's responsibility as the financial wing, but the park board is a group of citizens that, you know, spearhead these initiatives and offer the first approval prior to the recommendation of coming before town council. So this was approved at the, the previous park board meeting.
I, I don't think any of the concerns is with the park board. I mean, I think they do a great job. I have no complaints with the park board. This is all about financials. Questions I had earlier in the meeting that keep falling on deaf ears. Councillor Trailer was talking about, you know, this is the unfortunate reality of it, Jared. It has nothing to do with, with you, the job you're doing, what the Parks Board is doing. It is kind of this bag of tricks that keeps happening and no information we keep getting that is boiling up here today. So.
We can read about it tomorrow, though.
Yeah, yeah. So don't take it, don't take it as anything against you or the Parks Board. This is just me personally wanting financial information to make decisions on a macro level, not at a fund level.
I certainly don't like the process. I am empathetic to the need and the risk of losing millions of dollars. We'll see what happens, but I would move to adopt this motion.
Second, well, hold on a second. We got, this is a, I jumped the gun on the public hearing. So I gotta announce a public hearing here, but is there any additional conversation or communication about this? Any other questions for Jared? As I stated, this is a public hearing, approved publication and notice of public hearing. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Do any members from the public who would like to comment?
What? So just, sorry, you did actually already do this, but prior to discussion. I'm not cutting your, your off, but we did actually already open and close the public hearing. I know it's been a long night, but prior to discussion, so what we typically do from a process perspective is do, we open and close the public hearing as it has been advertised. Then we take discussion of the council. So you actually already did that. It feels like a long time ago, I know, but.
Yeah.
Mr. President, if other people would like to continue to comment, I would refrain.
It's not to cut off discussion. I just wanted to remind him.
I thought maybe the commentary.
No, I mean, I, I think, I think that's a good point from Heather. You know, I mean, it's already been open, it's been closed. We've had dialogue. No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, it's just the process required by statute. So you open the public hearing, you allow for public comment. Well, but it.
That's absolutely incorrect.
No, no, it's, it's, it's an approval of a master plan. It's not approval of any parks projects. So just, no, no.
Okay, no, we're, we're not, we're not having the discussion.
Brad, before you make your motion, could I make a motion to continue this under the hopes that perhaps the mayor may give me the answers to my question at my next meeting and then I might be more supportive of these kinds of spending?
Yes, could, could also be a good time to get, to get an update on what we would be missing out on if this is not approved.
I, I agree. So my motion is to continue it for one meeting in the hopes that next Monday I can get answers to questions on the general financial system from the mayor and then get a better sense of spending the public's money here.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Yeah.
Heather, do I need to retract that? Or since it didn't get a second, it just.
It didn't, it failed for a lack of a second. And then maybe at the end of your vote, just to make a comment, maybe to guide this process for Jared to the next meeting, if I may.
Okay, so there's a motion to continue this to the next town council meeting, first by councillor Garrett, second by Plunkett. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven favors, zero opposed. Heather, will there be, will there be time to do another? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. So I was just going to recommend for Jared and his team, maybe reaching out to your legal counsel just to do an analysis of the two grant programs that you mentioned and maybe provide those specific requirements for those grants to the council. And then, you know, as a reminder to the council as part of the budgeting process for capital expenditures, we did direct Jared and his team, you know, to bring those before the council for each, you know, for individual consideration rather than just you know, approving a capital fund. This is coming from an operational fund. So I think that's the, the nuance, but I'm happy to work with you and Amy just to gather the information between now and the next meeting to, to try to provide back some information. Typically, our deadline is today, but since it's background information, I think maybe that'd be an update that he could provide at the next meeting and/or legal counsel.
Heather, wouldn't we have to have another public hearing?
I don't think we have to have another public hearing because we only have to have a public hearing noticed once for the actual amount and that's already been valid. So the public hearing's already been concluded and the amount up to the amount that was published would be available at the next meeting. It doesn't have to be in a consecutive or at the same meeting it can be. So I think we're okay there and I'll need to re.
Although Heather, someone could request to speak as an agenda item.
Oh, of course, of course. Yes. Yeah. And I think it might be helpful just to get some background clarification. Of course, you could also consider having an update at the next meeting and then calendaring it for a May meeting to give, you know, lots of opportunity for, for dialogue.
Yeah. Very good. Thanks, Jared. Up next is a consideration of additional appropriation resolution. This is the ARP premium pay. This is resolution 2022 dash zero five. I've got Joe and Heather both on here.
And this one is a public hearing again. So this is a public hearing on a published approval of ARP expenditures up to seven, for $700,000. This relates to the premium pay stipend that was approved previously for our first responders, police and fire under the American Rescue Plan Act. And so, Joe, you want me to do it or you?
You've got, you've got the appropriation.
Yeah. So you've got an additional appropriation in front of you. It was advertised for $700,000. At the previous council meeting, we talked about whether or not we wanted to approve the exact amount that would be needed to provide the premium pay stipend to police and fire members or look at a higher. and fire members or look at a higher amount. I think we were still moving a few, a few moving parts of the last meeting in terms of the final calculation, the final amount. Joe spent a lot of time, thank you for that, working through this calculation, which is dictated by the State Board of Accounts. And the final appropriation is $641,355.50. We did advertise at 700. I think the thought of council leadership was to go ahead and leave the additional appropriation at 700,000. That would give us a remaining balance of $58,644.50. What would happen to that remainder? I know, Councilor Melton, you had a question about that. It would stay in the ARPA fund. That amount would continue to be designated for premium pay stipends as allowable under ARPA. And so you would have a later option of considering that additional amount to spend on other employees. You could also go back and look at a proposal that exceeds 58,000, if it were, you know, to everyone in the town, for example. And then just, you know, we'll do, if that were the case, we'd have to come back and sort of re-initiate this process with a new public hearing. But that $58,000 will stay earmarked for premium pay. If you choose not to award additional premium pay stipends, you could always come back to the council and move that for some other purpose that's allowable under ARPA. So there's no harm in kind of keeping that balance there. I think we just wanted to make sure we had enough flexibility that we got people paid as quickly as possible.
I think that's a good summary.
Yep. This is the one fund I know the debits and credits from.
Which is why I'm supportive. Any, any questions for Joe or for Heather?
No.
This, this is, as Heather mentioned, a public hearing by approved publication and notice of public hearing. At this point, I'll open the public hearing with public. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on this? I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments from council? Yeah. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
First by Counselor Choi, second by Counselor Colp. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, six and, or seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a consideration of ordinance, admitting the 2022 salary. This is salary ordinance. This is ordinance 2022 dash 05. Oh, was this on here twice?
No, that's resolution. So, yeah, sorry. Did you hear that, President Plunkett? It's resolution and then ordinance. So they are-
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is ordinance 2020, 2022 dash 05. It's a first reading. Again, this is salary ordinance. Heather and Joe, any updates to this?
Sure. So you just approved the, the money. This is updating the ordinance that allows us to pay the folks. You're, I'm presenting updates to the salary ordinance itself, as well as attachment A, which update is updated to provide to eligible workers, the essential, the premium pay. Attachment A ties back the ordinance to the allowable maximum $5,000 award for Zionsville Fire Department and Police Department. Then attachment B, which has nothing to do with ARPA, is a schedule of holidays. It's been updated to reflect the correct general election date of November 8th, which was previously listed as November 1st.
Thank you.
Joe, you mentioned the $5,000 for full-time. Is that also inclusive of the part-time bonus?
It's a maximum of 5,000.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions for Joe or Heather?
I was just going to mention, I know there was a couple of questions by different members of the council. There were really two changes to the salary ordinance, and I think Joe did a great job of articulating those. There is a change in the, there's a new fourth where ask clause that we added to the ordinance that simply is referring to the original ordinance that we passed for 2022. We've amended the salary ordinance one time since that time. So it's referencing the first and second salary ordinance. So that's what that fourth where ask clause is doing. And then exhibit A, as Joe mentioned, is that premium pay ARPA language, which ties back to the ARPA ordinance that you previously passed, allowing and kind of creating the mechanism to be able to fund this. I know there was some discussion as well, as you're considering our votes tonight of approving this with the two-step process this evening, just so that we can go ahead and get those payments out to our first responders as quickly as possible. So if you are interested in doing that, Council of Plunkett, I can remind everyone of the process for that. We haven't done that in some time. So-
Would you want to go through that now or after?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So if we are going to consider approving this finally tonight, we would first approve it on first reading, which would need a majority vote of the council members. Then we would have a vote and a motion to suspend the rules. That motion needs to be voted unanimously by the members of the council to suspend the rules. And then on second reading, we would need a two-thirds vote of all the members of the council to approve on second reading. And that would ensure that it was approved tonight would go directly to the mayor for signature. And upon her signature or action, we'd be able to start to pay our first responders.
Very good. Any questions for Heather?
I, I had one question that I had emailed. I don't, I don't think I got an answer on. I understand, you know, when we, when we vote on the salary ordinance, we're voting on the range. So essentially, within the range, the administration can, you know, give raises and things like that. I get that. My question was, who, who, and I, and Joe wasn't sure either. I'm sorry. Yeah. But she wasn't sure either. Who approves the mayor's salary increases?
So the town council.
So if, if even like our, we're approving a range, but if, let's say, you know, the, the desire to give the mayor a raise was there, and how would that work?
Yeah. So the, so the, I think that the, this is not changing before you tonight, any of those numbers. So this was something previously included in a previous salary ordinance, right? Yes. Okay. So, you know, under the process, typically, you would set the compensation for every employee. There are a few communities that are using a range. I think that's something you may want to consider as a policy discussion for the 2023 ordinance or maybe any subsequent, you know, amendments to the salary ordinance. Typically, you set the compensation of the elected officers. And as the town council, then you cannot decrease that compensation during the calendar year. So once that salary is set, that stays fixed. And then the town council does have discretion to amend the salaries for other employees in the town. And that's just something that is both in our reorganization document for Resolution 2011 dash 14 from reorganization 2.0, but also in state statute.
Okay. So just to be clear, and I'm sorry, but just to be clear, if, if the, if the mayor did a comparison and said, hey, I'm being underpaid by $10,000, the mayor does not have the ability to give herself a raise of $10,000. It would come back to the council for approval.
With the caveat that if you approved a range and it's within that range, then you would be giving the mayor the authority to-
That's what I was-
Increase the salary up to that range.
Within the range. So, so as long as it's within the range, essentially, if she wanted to give herself a raise, she could.
Correct.
Okay. So that was my question.
Yeah. And it's, it's, some communities are using the range. I, I don't think it's, um-
That's what we've got.
Yeah, we have that. We have the bands, the pay bands.
Yeah.
Joe, I'm not worried about any one particular person. I mean, you went through a very thorough process to arrive at this new pay structure with these ranges, based on all kinds of data, comparison data, to make sure we were consistent with this range. And we all want to get everybody paid. It just seems, you know, now we have to adjust the rate, the ranges to make sure people can get this, what I would consider bonus pay. But these-
No, no, no. And I think that's the, I think the question that Counselor Trailer had is related to the ranges that were previously established in our salary ordinance. So the only thing we're doing tonight, we're not changing any of those bands for any elected officials or any salaried individuals in the town, right?
Yeah, I think, I think your question was kind of, your call out is a global question.
Yeah, my question was, well, my question, like, yeah, it was very specific because, you know, everybody under the mayor and the organizational chart has somebody that would have to approve a, a raise for them within, even within the band. They would have to approve. I just don't, I don't like the idea of a person being able to give themselves a raise without having to report to anybody as, as long as, because, I mean, really, I mean, I'm not, hopefully it wouldn't happen, but the mayor could, you know, say, hey, I want a $20,000 raise and wouldn't have to come to us.
Yeah.
And wouldn't have to get approval by anybody.
If it's in that band.
If it's in that band.
Right. And typically, like, but I think that's, I just don't want to confuse the issue for tonight. I think that, I think you're right. I think you could go back always and consider as a group, an amendment to the salary ordinance to fix the compensation. Specifically, I think that's what most communities do, is they do, you know, they do fix a specific compensation. And then if there's a need, you know, to go back and revisit an employee or, or, you know, a position that's maybe changed, increased duties, decreased duties, new person we're trying to recruit, you can go back and change that. But I just wanted to make clear, just for Counselor Burke, we're not doing that this evening. There's no changes to what was previously approved.
I understand.
The only thing we're doing is adding ARPA-
I was, right.
Language. Yeah.
I was, I was just thinking a quick fix would be if we made the cap, you know, on that one position, the current paid salary until we get the revision in the, in the finance policy, you know, to make it to where you can't give yourself a raise.
Well, and I, and I don't know what the current, I mean, I don't, I guess I don't even know what the current compensation is. So I don't know if that's, if it has been changed or-
There's been two raises in the last three years.
There have been raises that are consistent with all staff across the board raises. Nothing that would, that would indicate anything specific for the mayor.
Correct. But there's been, yeah. All right. I just, we'll work on it later, I guess. But I wanted to point that out. It just bothered me.
Yeah, I think for purposes of this, there's a section we added on the salary ordinance that just says premium pay and goes to the eligible members. So it's at the bottom, bottom of the seventh page. And then the last page is just to Joe's point, updating for the election.
Yeah, right.
Would you entertain a motion?
Yeah, at this point, entertain a motion to introduce on first reading.
Second.
Yes, I would like to make that motion.
Yeah, Counselor Vice President Burke, first by Vice President Burke, second by Counselor Melton.
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second, so we got a first to, to suspend the rules by Counselor Garrett, second by Counselor Plunkett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to introduce in second reading.
Motion made.
Counselor Choi, second by Counselor Garrett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to introduce in second reading.
Motion made.
Counselor Choi, second by Counselor Garrett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven in favor and zero opposed. Joe, I want to thank you for getting this done. This has been something that we've been working on for quite some time, and I appreciate your efforts on this.
Thank you. I'm glad we all could work together on this.
Thank you. All right. I'd say we're on the home stretch, but we're simply on the last page. Everybody okay? Keep going?
Yeah.
Up next is a consideration of ordinance regarding the Town of Zionsville Historic Preservation Commission. This is ordinance 2022 dash 06. This is a first reading, and I have Joe and Heather down to present.
Yeah, we're gonna have Mark Delosse as well. He's here, which Joe has his presentation. We'll go into it in just a minute. Thank you, everybody. I know this has been a long night, and I wish Lance could bring another wastewater presentation here in a minute. But I will try not to, to go into it too, too detailed. And I'm gonna try to stay in the facts. But I've been working on this project, as you guys all know, for, you know, a couple of years now. This was brought to me by village residents. They were really, all they were trying to do at the beginning was to save historical homes, keep them from being moved, keep them from being demolished. And that's all that I've ever heard from the original group that came to me and asked for their help. And we've had two town hall meetings, one in the fall, and then we had one about two months ago. And at those times, we had proposed ordinances that would, at one point, require a, or originally to do a conservation district in the, in the, in the village. And I think that might be where some of the confusion and miscommunications happened tonight or, or on, on, you know, that we've seen tonight. So we met with Indiana Landmarks and Mark Delosse and his group, and it came very clear that we are putting the cart before the horse. Mr. Burke and I've talked, Vice President Burke and I've talked about this many times. Before you can get to anybody in the Town of Zionsville to even propose an ordinance for a specific district, whether it be conservation, historical, you have to have a commission. You have to have someone that has the rules and regulations can approve and also bring to us to approve that district. And so we worked really hard with Heather. The administration's been very, very helpful. And we have worked towards a specific state statute to create a commission, and that's what I'm bringing tonight. The reason I'm bringing this tonight, there were some folks that brought up the point, why are we even doing this? Well, right now, and there's also people that said, why are we adding another structure of government, which I don't want to do? The only problem is, is there's currently no government to restrict historical homes from being demolished in Zionsville. No, none. No zoning, no, nothing. So right now, there is no adding of government additions for this ordinance. And I think that's where a lot of people get confused. The other piece that's a little confusing is that when we originally wrote or we worked on for the fall ordinance was to be a less restrictive ordinance that would just be a conservation district that would have nothing to do with people's paint colors, by the way. Nobody's windows, nobody, none of those things. So again, I'm just trying to be factual here and not, not get into this. So what I'd like to propose tonight is, this has been gone through many iterations, but at the end of the day, this is the statute. This is what we have to do as, to approve as a group in order for our constituents to even propose any kind of district in the Town of Zionsville. And there have been enough people that have come to me and to other folks on this council that they would like to propose one. That doesn't mean it goes into effect. It would have to go through a process. The process would go through a commission. The commission would then come here and propose it. It cannot go anywhere. This, the document that you're looking at tonight has no meat. It has no teeth. Sorry, excuse me, it has no teeth. And that's been a little bit of a miscommunication you've heard tonight. And I kind of wanted to start there. And then I'll go into Mark Delosse. So we're going to talk about facts. I want to make sure everybody understands. So tonight, we all received from Mr. Hall a list of 111 people that are against this. So let me read to all of you what it actually says that these people are not in agreeance with. So in bold, it says, note, in the comments, please make sure and enter your street address. We're asking that the taste not be legislated. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to tell you whether or not addition, new construction or alteration you are planning to do meets the Historical Preservation Commission's taste standards before you can build, expand, or alter the exterior color fencing of your home. This is even more restrictive than an HOA. It would be an actual ordinance that would incumbent, encumber your property, new or old. The proposed ordinance is unnecessary, will cost the town money, cost you money, and create another layer of government. So I'll be reading this down. It says, if you love living in the village with its purple and pink houses, live into tapestry of equally distinct and interesting homes, you guys can all see this, is, you're able to get this, reflect not only in the past, but the present and future. Please sign the petition so the town council knows the true number of homeowners that are against the ordinance. In the comments, again, in all bold, please make sure and enter your street address. So when you go into this, of the 111 people that signed it, 48 made a comment with their address. Of those 48, 24 are from the same home. Of the signees, 18 were from Germany, seven were from Canada, and one was from Jamaica. So if, it's right here, if you want to see it. It's all done, signees. So I guess 18 people were in Germany that signed it. So you've already lost your time. I'm just reading exactly what it says on here. You guys are more than welcome to go to, I let you speak. Did I not? Thank you. So this ordinance, uh, I just want to make sure you get all the information. You're more than welcome to look at this. We will have a second reading. I'm more than happy for people to look at this and look at this piece, but if we're gonna talk facts, that's what it says right here. And even Mr. Hall, who brought this to us, said he, I'll read his exact words in here, just so that we're all talking the same information. If you read this, it says, while I support some aspects of the proposed historic district, which we've already determined this is not a historic district, so obviously that's miscommunication, which is also created, um, that's also been, uh, another Facebook page that's, and by the way, both opposed and for said historic district tonight. This is not a historic district. Want to be very, very clear on that. Um, I believe the current proposal is too restrictive. I completely agree. 100%. I would not vote for this today if this was for a specific district. I'm recommending that this be for a commission that follows the process and gets the communication from the community on what they want. And at the majority of every meeting I've had, every email we've had, it's been a two to one approval, even tonight. Vice President Burke's been at every meeting with me or heard it when we've talked. I don't know if he did a tally tonight, but I just want you, let you know that the only reason I'm here today is because the majority of my constituents have asked for this. That's it. And I was asked very nicely today by someone that never asked me this question before, and I thought it was awesome. Have you been all through all this for two years? Do you still think this is the right thing? And I said, well, nobody's ever asked me that. There were probably times I wanted to walk away from it because I didn't have all the information. I had to educate myself, okay? And my number one thing is, the majority of my constituents still want this. That is why it is here today. Okay? That's, that's my perspective. So since we all agree that this is not for a historical district, this is just for a commission, to give anybody in Zionsville the ability to go to a commission and propose a district, that's why I'm here today. And that's what I'd like, uh, Mark Delosi to come up and present to us what a commission does and what it doesn't do, so we can all be on the same page, same page, and we don't miscommunicate. So.
Good evening, counselors. I know you've had a long evening already, so I will try to, uh, keep this brief. Um, I do work for Indiana Landmarks. We are the statewide historic preservation organization, and I have spent many, many years working with different communities across the state of Indiana that are interested in enacting ordinance, just like the one that you all are, are, uh, reviewing tonight. There are currently 52 communities in the state of Indiana that have preservation ordinances. And there are thousands of communities across the United States that have, uh, preservation ordinances. Uh, the very first was Charleston, South Carolina, back in the 1930s. Um, and you heard Meg Burnsley come up and say Indianapolis, put theirs in place in 1967. So ordinances have been around, uh, protecting historic properties and creating a process, uh, that those, that those commissions, uh, can work through. Um, what underpins, if I can take just a moment with this, um, a significant part of why commissions can exist. Um, I've heard some people make reference to concerns related to property rights. Uh, there, those concerns were out there, uh, back in the 1960s, uh, when Penn Central Railroad wanted to demolish the landmark Grand Central Terminal. I think you probably all are familiar with that grand building there in New York City. When they applied to demolish Grand Central and the commission said, no, it's a landmark. We don't want to lose that out of our community. They sued the city of New York and the Preservation Commission. That case went all the way to the United States Supreme Court. The United States Supreme Court said, communities, municipalities have the right to regulate what occurs with, uh, historic properties in their communities. So that underpins any future designations or protections that a community wishes to afford uh, with, uh, with these properties. It's, I, I just want to say, it's been really interesting to work with, uh, the Zionsville community. I participate in both of the public meetings that Joe referenced earlier, to hear lots of, um, questions about what this would mean, opinions about how, uh, designation or, or even the passage of this ordinance that just creates the commission would impact them personally, or at least the perception that they, uh, they have of that. And, uh, I appreciate, I, I want you to know, I appreciate everybody's opinions that they have come out to share, whether I agree with them or, uh, or different. Um, I, I think that, um, this is a demonstration that these people care about their community. They care about their neighborhood. Um, and, uh, I think that that is something to certainly, uh, take away from this process. If I can get the next slide. Um, the thing that enabled communities to, uh, pursue, uh, the creation of Historic Preservation Commission was that after that decision by the Supreme Court, the Indiana Legislature, uh, passed Indiana Code 36 dash 7 dash 11, which allowed local municipalities to do just exactly what we're doing here tonight, to put in ordinance, uh, of this kind in place, uh, with the intent that it could help to protect and preserve historic properties and neighborhoods and, uh, downtown areas across the state. Once you have got the ordinance in place and the commission seated, then they need to set out to find what are those special, unique places with character in the community that should be preserved. And so that is certainly a step that, that the commission would take. Then, when they've identified those unique places and are working with the owners of those places collectively or individually, um, they then can, can consider, uh, passage of, um, or, or recommend a passage of an ordinance on your part to designate, to protect that property. So that comes later, after tonight. That's when the protection of individual properties occurs. And you've heard that already from Joe and others. Um, the, uh, this ordinance, or excuse me, the enabling legislation allowed communities to, uh, appoint between three and nine members to a commission. Uh, that is done here by the mayor with your approval. Um, and in the, this ordinance draft, that is five, uh, individuals who have experience in, uh, historic preservation or architecture, design, construction, real estate, areas that are kind of somehow, uh, associated with or affiliated with, uh, historic preservation. Uh, next slide. So what can the commission do? Uh, rules of procedure are important, just to know how they function and how they operate. I talked about a survey that they would do, not the kind of survey you've talked about earlier, about what people's opinions are. This is a survey where you're going out and documenting those important historic structures in the community. By the way, that survey is adopted by both the commission and the council. So that would come to you as well, so you can see what properties are being put on the list of individual structures or districts for, uh, preservation. Then that is what you use, that is your tool to work with the community to say, here, here is what you're, we're going to, uh, preserve. Um, the, ultimately, the thing that an applicant, so a property owner whose property is designated, needs to secure to do work to the property, is called a certificate of appropriateness. And you, um, propose what you are gonna do to your property to the commission. The commission hears that. If they feel that you are meeting the preservation plan that you and the commission drew up, then they will approve your request, and off you go to get your building permit. So it's that simple. Uh, next slide. So these are the things, I, I don't think I need to go through every single one of these, but that matter to the commission, um, such as, um, the proper growth and development of the community. And I really loved, uh, the comment, I, I don't know that he meant it in the same way that, that I would, uh, a perspective that I'm coming from, but I wrote down diverse architecture matters. And you're right, it does. And that is everything that what this is about is not to create homogeneity in a community, but rather keep those individual and unique, uh, places intact and as part of our everyday community. So that was a great observation. But anyway, so we do work to not just preserve existing structures, but I also want to make sure you understand that commissions encourage, uh, new construction and new development. Certainly part of what they do is to guide that development so it fits within the context of a designated area, but they do encourage, um, that they, they don't try to discourage new construction in, uh, in a historic district. Uh, next slide. So we talked about how, um, designation or protection of a particular area comes through a subsequent ordinance that would come both to the, the first of the commission for consideration and then recommended to you in the form of an ordinance for your consideration. Uh, then once that passes, as I said, future, uh, requests for the things that would be covered by that ordinance would come to the commission. Um, and I'm, I want to jump to the next slide if I can. So what I have heard pretty consistently in my interactions here in Zionsville is that most residents want to see a conservation district in place. This is a lighter version of, um, what a full historic district would do. A conservation district would, uh, merely do, review three things, uh, demolition of properties, moving of structures, and, um, the new construction piece. So if somebody, uh, were to purchase a vacant lot in a just designated district and wants to build a new structure on it, they would then bring those plans to the commission, who would review them, and then once approved, that person gets their certificate of appropriateness, gets their building permit, and starts construction. Okay. Um, so just to, uh, I guess, jumping to this last item here, I think is important. Sometimes people think that designation by a commission means they're also gonna tell them what they can do on the interior of their structures. And that is not true. This is only those things that are visible from a public right of way. So the exterior of a structure. If you can jump to the next slide. So let's talk about what a conservation district does not do. Um, because there are some, I think, misconceptions that, uh, if an area is designated as, uh, conservation district, that, um, there are certain things it'll do and certain things it won't. So I'm just gonna run through these quickly. It will not increase your property taxes. It will not require you to open your house for tours. It will not restrict you from selling your property. It will not place restrictions on the interior of your property. I mentioned that. And, you know, Joe's mentioned, I heard him a minute ago, say, make reference paint colors. It does not regulate your paint colors, because if the only three things it's, it's reviewing are the three that I just named, what color you paint your house is not going to be reviewed as a part of the, uh, landscaping. During one of the public meetings that we held, somebody continues several times, mentioned that, let's say, landscaping would be something that they were concerned would be reviewed. Well, in a conservation district, again, that's not the case. And again, it will not prevent or discourage new construction in this, uh, in a district. Next slide. So what is the process? Uh, just quickly, um, you will plan or develop what your request is going to be and what it is that you're going to make application for to the commission. You then submit the application. The commission will review that based upon, again, I, I haven't emphasized this enough, but there's a preservation plan that is developed, whether it's for a, a single property or for an entire district. And that, those, uh, will provide some guidelines by which you will, um, kind of, uh, follow in making decisions for those applicants. And then, once the project is approved, you can go out and start the project. So that's my quick and dirty presentation. Certainly, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um, and we can go from there. Thank you.
All right, before you guys ask questions, I had one more thing. Um, Mr. Lamb brought up a really good point earlier that I'd like for, um, Heather to address, and that is, why would you do a commission instead of just proposing an ordinance?
Sure. Uh, happy to. So, um, I did want to make a couple of comments, just, um, just for the council members. I talked to, um, President Plunkett about this. So, you know, I know we have, um, been talking about this now for a number of months, uh, and my, uh, objective is not to persuade any member of the council or the public to any specific position on the ordinance, but, um, I think it all started, I received a constituent call probably four years ago, um, about this, asking, um, questions on the statute and the law, um, with respect to ways in which, um, you could create some preservation mechanism, uh, for old homes in Zionsville. And I think a lot of that conversation was prompted by a number of variance requests that had been approved in the town, you know, changing, uh, the, um, the, you know, sidewalk offset, changing the parameters of homes, um, creating, you know, additional stories to homes and some of the new construction that had occurred. So when the conversation started, and I know with Counselor Culp, I think Counselor Culp called me and said, hey, I'm really interested, um, hearing from my constituents in considering a, uh, conservation district ordinance. And I said, okay, um, you can't do that. And so, um, he then said, but I would like to make sure it doesn't include this. And I said, okay, you can't do that, and here's why. And so, as the killer of dreams, as Lance would say, um, we are here tonight with a historic preservation ordinance instead. So I just think for members of the public, just to kind of have a little background on the intent is important. So when we really delved into the statute, um, I, I have lived in a neighborhood, um, I've lived in many neighborhoods, um, you know, that have been under the Indianapolis Historic Preservation. I see Meg, I've gone to Meg many times, both in my professional and personal capacity in life. That being said, the nuances um, in what is in the Marion County ordinance is different because their statutory framework is slightly different than what applies to other communities. So there's some, a lot, a lot of similarities, some nuances particularly related to the appointment of the members of the commission, which are different for Marion County than they are for other communities. Um, importantly, the statute itself, uh, is very prescriptive about how you set up a historic preservation commission. Um, it requires that you put in language about what the commission can and can't do. And there is a lot of language in the statute, which is Indiana Code 36 dash 7 dash 11, that Mark kind of talked about, that is very prescriptive, and it says, you shall do this if you're going to have this structure, you shall do this. And there's not a lot of discretion in terms of may provisions. Um, so a lot of the language that we did include to set up the commission, um, does have some of those more onerous provisions included, because there really isn't a workaround within the current statutory framework. And I say that just to say, it doesn't mean that if you go on and consider, uh, creating a conservation district, that you have to have all of those elements in place. Unfortunately, we just don't have a statute that says you can have a conservation district, and your conservation district can just do these limited things. So we did a lot of research looking at other communities, um, Fort Wayne, Bloomington, you know, how did they get at creating just a conservation district, which is candidly where we started. Um, and we looked at conservation districts. Um, and typically, a conservation district is very, um, And typically a conservation district is very less restrictive. So you heard Councillor Culp mention, you know, it wouldn't affect your paint colors. It wouldn't affect your sidewalks. It wouldn't affect your siding choice on a particular home. But really what it's focused on is how do you designate the most significant historical structures in any particular area in your community? And then how do you ensure that they aren't altered in a way that ultimately, you know, removes any of those historic significances? So you're not demolishing them. You're basically not, you know, tearing them down and just leaving like a little bit of the structure left. And so in those conservation districts, you know, you can, as a body, really go back and decide, hey, we want a conservation district for this area. This is what the conservation district might look like. You know, we want it to include paint or we don't want it to include paint. We want it to include sidewalks and frontage areas, you know, that are in the public view of the right of way, or we don't. And so each community has kind of set it up differently. But there are a lot of flexibilities when you get to that point. Unfortunately, the mechanism to govern these conservation districts is very prescriptive. So we, we've got one piece of what I would expect to be a multi-piece of puzzle kind of before you. And a couple other, you know, just notes. You know, is that you could specify if you wanted us an amendment. I know this is only, you know, consideration for first reading. We could, you know, include additional provisions like you specify that, you know, the commission has to make a recommendation on any conservation district and the council has to approve that recommendation to give even more, you know, insight into transparency. Under the statute, all of the meetings are open to the public. So the commission meetings have to be in a public meeting. All the approvals have to be in a public meeting. There are timeframes so that individuals who want to make alterations aren't stuck in limbo. There are very specific statutory timeframes that say when a decision has to be made or, you know, that person can move forward. But when talking to some of the folks who had concerns, you know, I, I hear them talking about some of the more onerous provisions and it, you know, there's definitely the philosophy of restrictions on property, no restrictions on property that sort of underpins people's individual viewpoints. But I did want to share that sort of framework just so that you, you all as council members could have the context of, of why, you know, we as Barnes and Thornburg made this feel more difficult to you, wasn't our fault, it was the statute. So without statutory, you know, revisions at state level, that's kind of where we are. So I just wanted to share that background with all of you and happy to answer any questions. We've been through this quite a bit, so.
So Heather, to, to that point, you know, Councillor Culp, who said, you know, hey, this has nothing to do with restricting your paint color, Mark said the same thing. If I'm looking at these ordinance, perhaps where some of this comes from, for example, in section seven, where we talk about the certificate of appropriateness. Within that section, that's within the A section. It says, you know, when you're within a primary area of a historic district, it is a conspicuous change in the exterior appearance of nonhistoric buildings subject to view from a public way by additions, reconstruction, alteration, or maintenance involving exterior color change. So in, in what you just said, just so I can clarify, we have to have that in there because it's state statute. But that does not mean that the districts that may be set up, let's use the villages as an example, would have to have that in there. If they did, or if they proposed it, that would have to go through a process that would include a vote from the council before it could be authorized. And I don't think this council has much appetite for something so restrictive. What Mark talked about from a conservation district is appealing to save some historic homes. I don't want anything onerous on homeowners, much like I wouldn't want it on my own home that are, that are listed in here, but we can't take those out.
Right. And so part of the nuance, and Mark mentioned this as well, is we have historic districts and conservation districts and the historic commission. So there's kind of three layers that you typically see. The commission itself is just the body that would ultimately review any request for a certificate of appropriateness under any district or conservation district. So it's, it's saying, these are the kinds of things that this commission statutorily would be able to do based on their requirements of state statute. It doesn't mean if you set up a conservation district that you have to do all of these things. You can be much more limiting and I would share, just based on our research, I don't see another community that's using conservation districts that include many of the things that are, are included here, only full-blown historic preservation districts. Meg Purnsley mentioned, you know, Indianapolis has got historic preservation districts and then they've got conservation districts. And there's sort of different nuances to, you know, what they are reviewing for in each of those areas. But if you look at Fort Wayne or Bloomington, for example, in Bloomington is a really good example. They only say if you're going to, you know, demolish the building or make a major alteration. They have whole subject matters that don't even come before the conservation district or the commission for approval. So lots of like, you know, routine, uh, ma- routine maintenance alterations. They don't even go through the process at all. And then they've exempted out things like paint colors, you know, sidewalks, landscape from the front, you know, any, any of those things that, you know, folks have expressed some concern. And so I do think there's flexibility. Unfortunately, it's like the framework for the commission is kind of the first step and then you can kind of, you know, go through. I think in kind of looking at this and we've, we've talked about it, you know, there's been a lot of conversation. I mean, we, we talked about could we, should we, you know, have the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance? And then simultaneously have the Conservation District ordinance at the same time, right? So that the public can see both. The challenge with that is there's still a survey process to decide what homes are of significant importance. So it's hard for us to do the district part without knowing the survey part. So, because we're working at kind of a deficit of information. So I think that's why the decision was made, do the commission first, allow the survey to be completed, make that a part of the formal recommendation so you can really understand from a public perspective, what homes are you even talking about? Because it won't be every home in any particular area. So that, it's a little chicken and egg, but you know, just a method to sort of the madness of how these things kind of got put together and the timing for each. But I know a lot of the concerns raised or that I've heard and read are all things that I know I've talked to Councillor Culp about. And, you know, we, we tried to find workarounds in the commission's enabling statute, but it's just so prescriptive in state law. We really just don't have a lot of options.
Yeah, if I could presented a conservation, you know, district tonight as part of the, I would love that. In fact, if I read, uh, what Miss, uh, Mr. Hall wrote here, I wouldn't have signed anything. I wouldn't be up here tonight. There's no way I would allow for it to be that restrictive. That'd be awful. I wouldn't want to live in a communicate, I don't want to live in a community like that. So that's the tough part is Heather, I've worked on it for so, so long and I tried every which way, guys. I know opposition don't believe me. I tried every which way to get this restrictive language out of here and I can't. That's the thing that stinks.
Is it essentially that you have to list out the buffet of options and then the district?
Yeah.
Pick from those options, what?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's the enabling statute. It's very prescriptive. And I think it's, you know, having been involved in this at a state legislative level, it's prescriptive for a reason. It was really prescriptive because they wanted, I think legislatively to protect and preserve individual property rights. And so they wanted to say, you can only do these things, you know, and this is the only parameters you have. And these are the timeframes you have to work. And so what ultimately happens then is it almost has the opposite appeal publicly because it looks like you're imposing all these things. When really I think, you know, legislatively, it was set up to sort of preserve and balance historic preservation with individual property rights, which, you know. But again, I mean, I'm, I'm just sharing information. I don't want anybody to think I'm advocating for one side or the other. But this is the method of the madness of which led us to where we are today.
I have a pretty benign question. Uh, I didn't see anything in here that would cause us, you know, if we had the historic, uh, what was this? I don't want to call it the wrong thing.
Preservation Commission.
Yeah, if we had the historic preservation commission without any districts having been established. I didn't see anything in here that I felt like would require in addition to staffing for the town. I, but also just don't want to assume, I'm assuming that would probably fall on Wayne's. And Wendy, a simple nod or shake would be sufficient. But, uh, do you see anything in this ordinance that would require you to need to hire additional people? Not until a district is established? All right. All right. So that, that was, yeah, that's my one question.
Yeah, there's some prescriptive things in statute that says basically like the planning department, you know, shall staff. And then it talks about the council for the administration shall serve, the legal council for the administration shall service the legal council for the commission. So it even takes, I mean, it even is very specific on that as well.
Mark, this is like this question for you or Maggie, and I'd be curious. I, I've heard a lot of lawyers live in Zionsville. Does this turn into a litigation time bomb that you've seen in other historic districts where neighbor suing neighbor, someone's walking by and sees something and creates a lot of litigation as a result of this?
I have not seen that as a result. I wouldn't be up here advocating for this if I thought that that was where this was going to be headed. I mean, Meg, I don't know if in Indianapolis, if you've seen a lot of that.
Yeah, you're going to have to come up here.
Yeah, sorry.
So I think the simple answer that I would give you is that the process actually creates a more fair process by having a commission and by having, we, you know, we have a public hearing process too. And so it allows for the public to chime in during that public hearing opportunity. So I think what happens is there are actually probably less lawsuits, if you really want to know, because we have this very open public process where people can go through and work with us to try to remedy whatever issues there are. Usually that happens before the project comes before the commission. If it does not, there is a appeal process in which somebody can go through and we do handle those as well. But I would say those are extraordinarily rare. So the, what I think ultimately happens, and I can only speak for Indianapolis, is because there is this process, people do go and very, you know, literal, you know, intentionally go and engage with neighborhood associations. We see that every month when cases come before the commission and the commission is expecting that. And the commission says, have you met with the neighborhoods about your project? And if they haven't, they're going to have them go back and talk with the neighborhood association before they come back the next time. So I think with that built into it, we sort of, you know, avoid some of these lawsuits.
Can you talk a little bit about, and this will be a rambling question, so bear with me. But when you're doing the survey to identify what is a historic home, are people notified that their home has been designated historic? Can they appeal that if they don't want the limitations that are implied by having a historic home? If they're not chosen historic, can they be, can they apply to be added to historic? So they, we had a couple of folks talk about afraid that they were going to sell their house and it would get torn down to the next buyer. Can they voluntarily add themselves to that list? Can you kind of talk through how that process just kind of happens and how that's imposed or given to people?
Sure, because I, I staff another commission and we've been dealing with the survey issue and even an update to our survey. So we did notify all of the, um, you know, people that we, properties owners that we thought were going to be surveyed, certainly let them know that surveyors are going to be out in their neighborhoods. We did it through neighborhood associations, et cetera. So that word certainly got out there when we did our updated survey. We by then, in, in this one instance, had in excess of five hundred properties that were on our survey already. And so we re-notified all of those folks that we were coming out to do an updated survey. To your question about, um, and, and then ultimately when that survey is complete, I think I mentioned this earlier, that is brought both to the commission and the council for adoption of that survey, those survey findings. But I'm trying to remember what your other.
Well, I guess, so let's say the survey is done and it comes to the council. It's a publicly published document and we have two homeowners that say, I absolutely don't want to be a part of this. And we have two homeowners that say, I got left out, I want to be on that. Is the council able to modify that list before approved? Or is that something that is prescriptive by the?
Well, I mean, I think certainly to the point about if there are people interested in being added, we would bring to you, or, or Wayne's department or whoever would bring to you a recommendation on which property should be added and why. I mean, I think there needs to be a case made as to why a property is being added to the survey, not just sort of randomly adding it. And I would say the flip is, the flip side of that is the same for removing properties off the survey. I think we would want to make sure that there is a viable reason why a property is being requested for removal or, or not to be included.
But there's nothing in state statute, if someone came to us and said, I have an eight hundred square foot home that I'm planning to tear down in a week and it's just, you know, I need to be able to do this, can I get off the list? There's no, nothing, nothing preventing us from saying, all right, we'll, we'll eliminate that.
Well, let's, let's be clear. Identification of properties that could potentially be designated, meaning they're on the survey, that doesn't afford the properties that are on the survey any protection. They have not been through an ordinance approval process with the town council. So there's no protection there. So nobody's telling them what they can or can't do at that point until they're a protected property.
But the list of protected properties is part of the, what's voted on within the ordinance? Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I think the thought would be that once the survey identifies, you know, is identified by the commission, then you would, you would be able to see what is historically significant is the term that's used. And then that list or map would be included with the actual ordinance, creating the conservation district. If it's included, then I think they'd have to go through this, you know, certificate of appropriateness process. Again, it's, it's a living, breathing document because we age, you know, and time goes on. So it's probably something that has to be updated periodically and would probably be a recommendation I would make if you move forward with the conservation district, that you include a review or updated survey on a fairly, you know, go-forward basis because what's historic today is not going to be historic in twenty-five year or, you know, something else may be historic in twenty-five years. So I do think you'd want to have a very delineated process for that review and approval. And then I know there was also conversation on that Councillor Culp and I have had as well about, you know, making sure that if someone purchased a property and it was going to be subject to these requirements, that there'd be something that would be required to ensure that the new owner would, you know, if they received a certificate of appropriateness, for example, it would run with the land so that somebody else in the future wouldn't have to, you know, go back through the process again.
Yeah, Meg's done something that I think is really interesting with my board as a way that potential purchasers of a property can, you know, kind of be red flagged that it's designated.
I'm assuming you're interested in this, but, um, yeah, we did last year, about three or four years ago, I coordinated with my board and they were very gracious enough to allow for all of the parcels in our historic districts to be flagged in my board's realist system. So if anybody's realtor in the room, you know what I'm referring to. And it literally just pops up a notice of jurisdiction on there. And my board is actually really interested in knowing of any other municipalities that are on the docket to become designated because they'd also like to flag those, including Donut Counties of Marion County. So it's proven to be a very effective tool to let new property owners know that that property is in a locally protected historic district. And I'll just add one thing about the question regarding the survey and boundaries. We have several historic districts where the proposed boundaries, as they were presented to the commission, were actually modified before the plan was adopted. Because again, our process is a very public process. And when a property owner became notified that their property was potentially going to be in the district, they had asked that it not be included. And so if you look at any of the boundaries of any IHPC districts, they're not a box. It's very jagged because there was very deliberate intentions to creating those lines. St. Joseph is another one where there was, it's, it's very haphazard because there was a lot of back and forth over who should be in and who, who didn't want to be in. But to your point, properties change hands. And so the new property owners, I think the question I'm hearing is, if I want to buy a property, or maybe I just bought it and I didn't know I was in a district, can I do something about it? IHPC does not have a de-designation process. But I think if I read the draft, there may actually be some language in this proposed, I don't know. But there is something in some municipalities, there is language that can allow for de-designation. It doesn't necessarily mean cutting one specific person out, but it could be the whole district.
That language is in there, I believe it's section 13. But the reason I didn't bring that up earlier, you were talking about the survey, not the designation of through a separate ordinance to protect them. You were just talking about when they've been surveyed, the commission, and that's what I was.
Meg, you may not know, I'm sorry, Meg may not know this, but I'll ask it. With the MyBoard data, those homes that are designated historic, do you know if they sell slower? Because that scares people or faster because it excites people to be in that? Or is there, those kind of two cancel each other out and has no impact on someone looking to sell their home that has been designated historic?
Well, I'm no expert on that topic, but I can tell you that I hear regularly from real estate agents that they definitely sell faster. You know, it's, it's really a, that's more of a buyer specific question. You know, whether they choose to be in or choose not to be in. But I know, I'm sure landmarks can attest to some studies that have been done about the impact on real estate values.
Well, you did answer me quick, and I just want to make sure that if we're applying a status to someone's home, we aren't then handicapping their ability to sell it if and when they choose to make a change in the living. And based on at least anecdotal information, it sounds like that's not happening.
Yeah, we actually get calls from developers, specifically developers too, who, who very intentionally seek property in his locally protected historic districts, because a lot of people view it as almost like an insurance policy. And so that's why we get a lot of calls, are we in or are we not? Because if they, they want to make sure that they are in so that they, because to them, they view it as adding that extra layer of protection and insurance to their investment.
You guys have talked a bit around this, a question wasn't that, Mark, maybe you can dig a little deeper around the kind of the criteria process. And the specific question I'm talking about in a conservation district that were to be proposed, which is frankly, all I would consider as a council member. Within a district, there's this survey. And not every home in a conservation district, let's just say the village of Zionsville, would be designated as historically significant, maybe a fraction of homes could be designated as historically significant. Is that correct?
Yes, so in the one section of the ordinance, it goes through and talks about the significance levels, the degree of, so a property can be rated outstanding, notable, contributing or non-contributing. So your outstandings are the most important or most significant within, say, the boundary of a conservation district, down to things like a vacant lot or a parking lot or a building that's been significantly altered. That might be just a non-contributing structure. So that's how you're getting at which buildings are more important and which aren't.
So it's not everybody and there's criteria and that criteria is not just age, it could be other factors. Well, just because your home's old doesn't mean it's historically significant.
Yes.
So this could be very prescriptive and very narrow if that's the way it's designed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is a conservation district an HOA?
No.
Mark, you said it'll not discourage new construction. Will new construction builds be required to present to the commission in a district?
Yes. In a, in a, well, in both a conservation district and a full historic district.
There's a whole nother process outside of the typical planning department presentation. Are you suggesting, so you also mentioned earlier that new builds would have to present to a neighborhood association? Or, excuse me, I think, I think Meg mentioned that they present to a neighborhood association too before they go to the historic preservation or the, the commission, is that correct? I mean, you mentioned that, right?
It's not a requirement. It is strongly encouraged.
Okay, so I guess my question is, VRA, is that our neighborhood association in Zionsville? Is the village residents association the same as a neighborhood association?
I, I don't believe it is. I don't believe it is a homeowners association in the traditional sense.
Homeowners, so village residents association versus neighborhood association. My question is, will we have to present to a neighborhood association before we go to the historic committee? And do we have to create another association to make this work?
So the legal answer is no. I think what Meg was mentioning in Indianapolis, it's encouraged because I think the thought is you want to have your neighbors buy in. You want to make sure you're talking to your neighbors about what you're proposing. In my experience in my neighborhood, which was Lockerbie in Indianapolis, it's different. It's very restrictive down there. But, you know, we, we had that process of talking to our neighbors and, and working through kinks in advance. But it is not a legal requirement. It's not in this statute or in this ordinance as proposed.
So this ordinance is guided by state statute. The town of Zionsville is unique in its own right because of its structure. Is this the right statute for us to use? Because we're unique, the unique, one or two unique municipalities in the state that have a structuring with a mayor and a town council through our reorganization. Is this the only option we have? And tell me why. I don't understand why. If we're unique, if Indianapolis can have, be unique themselves, Meg mentioned, they're all appointments by the city council and the mayor. I don't understand why we can't be unique like we already are regarding this statute, this paper push. I don't understand.
Well, only in that there is a process prescribed in Indiana code that says if you're going to designate a historic preservation commission or historic preservation district, you have to use this enabling statute. And I think it's to my earlier point, I think the statutory reasoning behind that, like why the legislature, you know, would choose that is they were trying to make sure that a community couldn't come in and impose upon individual citizens, you know, certain restrictions without exact parameters and remedies for those individuals. Because they were trying to balance conservation with, you know.
Perhaps a point that Craig's asking is, in every community in Indiana that has a commission, are they all mayoral appointments or are there exemptions where some communities have council appointments?
Not that I'm aware of, only in Marion County, which has a different government statute that's similar, but not exactly the same. It gives appointments to the executive and to the city county council.
So if that's true, why is, why is Marion County have an exemption that's not tied to state statute? Why, why are they special?
Probably because they had an individual lobbyist working on the interest of Marion County. I mean, just to be honest.
So they carved it out within the statutory language?
Yes, yes, they're, they have probably the longest, most robust.
No, no, I get it. It's in the statute.
But it is different. So I think they're governed by 36, 7, 10. We're governed by 36, 7, 11. And so it's just, there, there are some nuances in Marion County that are unique to Marion County in the consolidated city. I think the other difference in, to be fair, I was teasing about the lobbyists, but it's probably true. But the other difference is it's a consolidated city. So they have the, they have the governance of the, of the, the unit of structure, which includes the county. And so there's a lot of statutes that exist specific to consolidated city that different, that are different than other communities. And I think that's because you've got representatives from what otherwise would be the county here with the county commissioners.
So the fact that Zionsville has a unique organizational structure compared to most towns has no bearing on this.
Yeah, with, with your question about specific appointments to the commission, it, it does not because it clearly states, there's language, and I can read to you the language. It's in 36, 7, 11, 4A. It says the voting member shall be appointed by the executive of the unit, subject to the approval of the legislative body. So the mayor in this instance would have to present her recommendations for appointment to the council. The council then would approve or deny those recommendations.
What, what happens at the denial? I'm sorry to interrupt.
If someone was denied, they said, hey, I don't want Mr. Smith, you know, to serve on the commission. Then the mayor would have to either convince you otherwise, why Mr. Smith would, you know, be the best person to serve and or present another candidate. But because of our reorg, there's certain functions that stay with the council, certain functions that stay with the executive. And this is one that is an executive function in its entirety. So it, it, there is no nuance because of our unique reorganized structure under this particular statute.
I guess, given that it does, and I understand because of statute, we have to have it like this. And I'm not going to argue that. But my question is, given how much it does put on the mayor, you know, to make the appointments and things, do we know if the mayor is supportive of this ordinance? And I would, I would, I guess, I'd point that to Joe, because I know, I know you can't really. Joe or anybody, does anybody know if the mayor's supportive of this ordinance?
The administrative helped with this. That's all I know. Not specifically the mayor, but the mayor's administration was a critical part of building this, this process. But I can't answer that.
I have no idea.
I guess, I guess the assumption would be.
That's next week.
I would say there's been a lot of support and facilitation from the administration that I have seen, including the deputy mayor setting in on a number of discussions as well. Their, their general counsel has reviewed this multiple times.
They've been very, very, very supportive and helping.
I mean, just given how much it puts on them, I want to.
That's why Wayne was so critical to this whole process.
To the question of who appoints what and what statutorily required, I mean, you can set a precedent within this particular body that town council takes a very critical look at who is appointed and takes part in conversation about who is appointed to a degree that goes beyond what we normally approve with other commissions and committees. And that's your check and balance in this, not to just blanket approve something that is put forward onto us, but to actually critically be involved in that process. I mean, that, that's our check and balance because that's why it has to be approved by us, even though it's mayor.
That seems, seemed to add a whole nother layer of things that are going to be required of this council now as we move forward. Seven individuals that we don't know who they are.
Five.
It's five, excuse me, five on the commission, correct? Wayne mentioned that there's going to be potential cost. And I think there's already been a mention of hours, but hours of, on the staff, but not necessarily a new hiring in the advance. So as soon as this commission gets approved, there will be a cost at the, at the level of staffing that already exists. But once there's an ordinance, there'll be an additional cost for an employee is what I understand. Is that, is that correct, Wayne?
He did not say there would be an additional employee, but he can, he can speak to that.
That was a direct question from another councillor earlier.
He didn't say there would have to be.
Certainly without having a district to then extrapolate this information from it, that there's no answer to the question that can be offered. Certainly using the original ordinance that came in last year at some time. It was called the Conservation District Ordinance and it had a map attached to that ordinance. Looking at that information, extrapolating out the active permits that were issued in that district, then what was called a district. And that, I think it was a 24 permits. So we looked at that as a caseload of what would have qualified under that structure for needing a certificate of appropriateness. I think we gave original testimony in September of last year. We talked about an $800 charge if you were to try to go even operating costs against the permit. I mean, you have the fees of $5,000, $7,500 for their services on top of the, the legal fee. Probably there's a retainer or something to be necessary. So there's some, there's some structure, but without knowing the size of the district, if it's one home or 749 unique address units, that's, that's completely different conversation. And certainly in the 2021 study that was completed by Sullivan months, there were 400 properties that were identified as contributing to that district answer. Councillor Blom or Councillor Burke's question from a little bit ago.
How many homes are downtown Zionsville? I guess whatever the downtown, what we call downtown.
Out to Ninth Street, you have about 749 unique addresses. In the business corridor, you have about 175 unique addresses. Some of that all commercial, some of those are residential above, above commercial.
And somewhere in that 400 range is the contributing number that a previous survey had already been.
Right, last year in 2021, Sullivan, Sullivan months can get authorized to survey. There were 586 homes or properties identified in that survey. I believe 400 qualified under that regime that was listed in that document as outstanding, notable or contributing.
And this is a question for Joe. Joe, you, we did, did we do a survey on this as well? You, you did a survey and your responses back were what number of individuals wanting this?
No, that.
That's not the survey?
That's two different surveys.
Okay, so.
The survey he's speaking about.
No, I understand his survey. I'm talking about the survey of, I was just, I'm just, in my mind, I see 700 homes plus the 100. You know, and I'm just thinking how many people we have, potentially two people per residence. And again, this is focusing on Zionsville downtown only primarily because there could be other districts elsewhere if the commission's created. And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if there's 400 homes, what percentage of the people involved that are wanting this? To which I have only the emails that we've received in the last, well, over the last few months. Just trying to get an idea in my mind, who, what percentage of people are interested in this? And the percent comes from the whole, in my opinion, of the downtown Zionsville, potentially the village residents association area.
I don't know, you want to speak to that? Can I bring someone up? Chelsea, can I, am I allowed to bring someone up for that? Whoa, 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 okay.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the survey.
I don't have it sitting right in front of me.
So the, so the information needed is on, is on the website, Heather, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I think, I think, okay, okay, everyone.
Let's settle down.
I know it's super late.
I know, yeah, for real, it's late. Everybody's had a chance to say certain things that they want to say. I mean, let's just, let's relax a little bit.
Yeah, so I think the question was just on, you know, the number of folks who've been involved in the process in terms of surveying the constituents. I know there has been, as I understand, a lot of outreach to the constituents and multiple efforts. I do think there is some information that was included on the website. And I'm certain I can get that for you or Joe could get that for you from someone if you. I don't, I don't know the specifics. I apologize.
Just my two cents. I don't put a whole lot of weight behind either survey because.
That's a great point.
One, I mean, one, both surveys were worded to get the answers they wanted.
I guess, I guess that's, that's my point a little bit with the people that are in Jamaica, signing this other petition that we were presented with tonight with these 100 names. I do recognize names on this list. I, I've spoken with several of these people, some of these people recently about this in denial. I I've spoken with several of these people, uh some of these people uh recently about this in denial. So, you know, to discredit all of these or whatever.
I would not discredit all those.
Yeah, I I I understand. I I think it would be fair to discredit some on the other side as well.
All right, so let let me give you my perspective. We've had two town hall meetings. We've sent out, this is all facts, people, we've had two town hall meetings. Vice President Burke and I've been to both.
I've been to one as well, so.
And we've counted every single time that it's a two to one approval for the people that that have.
Show up, correct?
Yeah, and that's emails too.
Well, I mean, we're affecting more people than that actually show up.
Commission is not affecting them.
But the commission is a step to the next.
Yeah, and that would be have to go through the whole process again, start from scratch before it would even come to us.
I mean, I I think, and I've been, I've been quite kind of quiet just listening, but I mean, from my perspective, again, it's. I feel like it it's statutorily restrictive, as we've talked about, by way of appointments. And I I'm a less government guy and and I think that this is a step to. The next step, which adds another layer of government that I don't necessarily feel like is necessary. But, I mean, that's just me.
I'm just curious, who who should govern the historical homes then? How could we protect that?
I would just ask, why do we need a historical, a historical historical society or preservation district or?
It's the only way you can save homes. There's no other govern governance in Zionsville.
That's true. I I think you could also make the argument that some of these new homes that are being built is our new history. I mean, some of these new homes to, somebody mentioned it before, you're going to look back twenty five years and these are the new homes that are need to be on the district. I mean, I just, again, I'm a I'm a property rights guy, so I I like the idea of people being able to do what they want to do with their homes.
I am very much a property rights guy also, but I really have problems when historic homes are being demolished. Without any recourse whatsoever, and that's one of the i- issues that we're dealing with here, isn't the construction of new homes. That might not historically fit in because there's no restriction, there's no blanket restriction around that. What what I can't stand, and I lived in the village for seven years and um on Main Street. So what I. And I I actually lived on one of the homes that was built by somebody. It was built on a demolished property that apparently was of no historic significance. I don't know. I just bought the home and lived there. It was a great home. But the point being is that there are a lot of homes there that are being demolished, destroyed. The most recent one on Main Street being an example that. It was afforded no protection at all, and it is a historic, in my eyes, a very unique home. That should have been protected, and this allows for that to occur. I am very much a property rights guy as the next person, but the character of Zionsville and what it means. That's that there is great importance in that um in preserving those characters. And I understand taking out the homes that have no contributing value to the village. But I cannot, I cannot support taking out homes that have unique qualities. That add to the historic nature of the village. And that's where I think that despite the fact this is yet another regulation. That there are some times that important regulations need to be affected in order to preserve and protect what's important to us. And that's what I see in this.
Is there any mention of fees in here? Wayne mentioned eight hundred dollars to do something. Is it? None of that is laid out because I know it's been a theme in emails I've gotten is this eight hundred dollar idea. That's just the cost of services based on the transaction. It's nothing that is laid out that if we pass this day, which again is not. Not something that would govern anything, but even if the next step went, it's not saying it would definitively be an X fee, correct?
Right, that's correct. There's language in the proposed draft that simply states that any fees would be posted on the town's fee schedule. Um, and I don't think to Wayne's earlier comment, we know what that would be. And we also need to make sure it's within the statutory framework for fees. But it's really just, I think, contemplated to cover any additional cost for review. And that may look different depending on what the conservation district looks like.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Counselor Cole, Heather, or? Anyone else? Having none, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I would like to propose a motion to approve uh the first reading.
First by Counselor Colt, second, second by Counselor Choi.
Should we do a roll call for this president?
Sure. And before we, before we do that, maybe spell out what the first reading means, like.
Sure. So just for everyone here tonight, we're only approving on first reading, which means we'll have a second reading. There'll be some time. We could calendar it, which typically we would calendar it for the next meeting. Our next meeting is next week just because of the spring break. But the council president does have the discretion to calendar it for a later meeting. Um, there's no timeframe in that. So if you wanted some more time, you could calendar the.
I think it should be an evening meeting to give everybody an opportunity to come and 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 watch the video, listen to everybody. Give them a chance to really, I want them to have the opportunity.
Yeah, it's not a final approval. This is me, most importantly.
Yeah, Amy, if you'd like to go ahead.
Sure. President Plunkett?
No.
Vice President Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Choi?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Milton?
No.
Counselor Trailer?
Yes. Motion passes five in favor to opposed. And I think, I think obviously we'd consider putting this on the, not the next meeting, but the first meeting in May. So that we give people an opportunity to come back. All right.
I do appreciate everybody being.
Oh, my gosh, thank you so much.
You to both sides on this.
I I was just going to mention to us the counselors review if there are specific questions, comments, or, you know, potential amendments that you'd. Like to see considered for the next meeting, then just send those to Joe or myself so we can catalog them.
Got it. Up next on the agenda.
We're not done. Your your item's done, ours isn't.
I know we all like to be there. Give us a couple minutes.
If everyone could just, we're we're still in a public. You're welcome to, but yeah.
Uh, up next on the agenda is other matters. Any counselors have any other matters to bring up?
To do, um, I just want to remind someone that the lost revenue report is due April thirtieth. That is tied to the ARPA funding. And we talked about this a meeting or two ago, and I just, I'm throwing it out there. That's one of the important steps to make sure that this funding we have that paid for the the first responder. Stuff we did today gets, doesn't get re- re- retracted by the federal government. So I don't know who to tell that to, but I'm just bringing that up as a, I hope someone's violent it because it's due April thirtieth.
Heather, is that is that something that?
That would be something I see our new CFO and Cindy and.
Picked a great meeting.
As long as you're aware, I'm good.
All right, um, if there's nothing else, we're on the claims. I do, Cindy, have some, a couple of questions on claims. And hopefully they're just. Are easily the easily answered.
Oh, I got some too.
In in looking at, in looking at the claims, I I've got two questions really. My first question is. I noticed there were, so there's some claims that were on the last sheet that were transferred to this one. And then some that weren't. Are we voting on two separate claim sheets?
It was supposed to be two separate claims sheets, yes. And um as I was reviewing them back there, it does look like some of them can carried over into the second one.
Okay, and then my next question is, if these get continued again, for whatever reason, if they get continued, if they get. Whatever, obviously, we've got claims that were that were paid or or expenses on the purchase cards.
Right.
If they're continued, have we paid those bills or and would we have to file a claim against Chase? For those expenses?
Those payments are automatic each month.
Will be paid regardless of whether we decide to continue it or not.
Yes.
That doesn't seem right.
Yeah, yeah, so they shouldn't be automatic until there's an approval. So there would have to be an approval of claim just because the process is automatically deducted. If the claims aren't approved to be paid, then we can't pay Chase, so.
The previous, yes.
We would be, you know, earning extra interest. We would be out of contract. We would, just like any other credit card. You would be um having a late payment. There would be consequences for that. But there should not be an automatic payment of claims until they are approved regardless of how they're formatted, right? I mean.
You're correct.
Okay, I just want, and Cindy, I know it's late, so I just, I just wanted to clarify that because this has been a point of contention. So we just, no claim, including any P card claim should be paid unless the town council's approved it.
But if we, if we continue the claims, they will be paid is what we're what we're hearing.
The way, yes, the way the previous CFO set it up was to have automatic payments.
And so that would be out of compliance. So we'll talk to Kelly and Cindy, and we'll put that on our list for tomorrow, just to make sure that is not happening. And Tim's back there making a head nod, so is Kelly.
Okay, that's.
I'm not voting for claims to like some answers on the financial system. I just, I hate to do it, right? These are vendors that are stuck in the middle, and Cindy, you've done a great job. There's nothing against you. You've been, you've been a one woman show for a while here. But I just, this wants a basic question, and I'm happy to pay claims. I don't understand why I can't.
To your point, there's there's claims that are on the three twenty one sheet and on the four eleven sheet. So we would be paying both, the double paying for the, like, for example, for the first.
Well, it wouldn't actually be a double payment. I mean, it, yes, it's on both sheets. One payment is made. There it wouldn't be double payment. What it's skewing is the total amount on the second one. But double payments wouldn't be made.
I'm hopeful the mayor doesn't skip the April eighteenth meeting because I won't vote for claims then either if she still ignores our questions. I'm hoping we can come up and have a adult conversation, get some answers, maybe look at the Parks five year plan. Certainly get claims done and get caught up. That would be ideal. That is my ask. Other councils ask, that is my personal ask.
Yeah, I mean, I hate that we keep getting put in this position to where it's like.
I don't know what else to do.
I don't either. And it's and it's frustrating because there are vendors. There are people that need to get paid.
Should get paid.
And, I mean. I I don't. I don't understand how we could, without going through and line by line, eliminating the claims that are doubled up here. If we're approving the claims, we're approving the claims, um but. This is tough.
Cindy, what is your, what is your process when you see them double?
I want.
Entered, and you said they won't get paid twice. How do you, how do you make sure that they?
They're not double entered. What happened is when she pulled the information out, she didn't select the the correct timeframe. Because she she pulled the information out of the system that had the previous. Claims on there. So they're not in the system twice. It's just how the dates that were used when she pulled.
So if maybe I'm misunderstanding, but if we. Put the March ones aside and just approve the the April eleventh ones. Does that include everything? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I noticed it when I was back there, so I don't know if if all of the March ones were duplicated in this or just some of them.
If it's all in one.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what I can, yeah.
They weren't because there's claims that are in here, you know. Like specific, specific to some Castleton trophy, something that's not, I mean. It's not on the new claim sheet, but it's on the old claim sheet. The perf match from March, the March claim sheet is not on this one.
So my rationale doesn't work.
I mean, in a perfect world, obviously, yeah, if everything was just there, we would, you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go through them and basically pull out the ones.
We got a week.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, so, I mean, yeah, I would agree. Any other questions for Cindy or any other comments? I mean, I would make a motion to continue. To next week, second by Counselor Garrett. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes six in favor, zero or seven in favor, zero opposed.
Heather, does that motion capture both claims? Because there's Nancy in here. Is that fine? Okay, thanks. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
First by Counselor Garrett. Second by Counselor Cole. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion passes, seven favors, zero opposed. Next regularly scheduled meeting. Scheduled for Monday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty two at seven thirty AM at Zionsville Town Council Chambers, filing the recipe posting the compliance with the Indian open door law.